I call it tonight, some of the planning board meeting to order. Anna, please call the roll.
Jason Berry.
Here.
Ron LaHulier.
Here.
Jeremy Rhodes.
Here.
George Gilmet.
Here.
Bonnie McNair.
Here.
Mark Richardson.
Here.
David Witham.
Here.
Chris Horton.
Here.
John Splain.
Next item is approval of the amendments of July 16, 2025 meeting. Does anybody have motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Berry, seconded by Mr. Gilmet. Any discussion? All those in favor raise your right hand. Opposed? Just for House committee purposes, Mr. Splain, you'll be an alternate this evening, so you can ask questions, but you won't be voting unless somebody recuses themselves. Next item is committee reports. There is the summary of the Elaine News Board reports. Any questions on that from the board? City council report, Mr. Witham.
Yes, I'll be brief. At our last meeting, there were two projects that ultimately, depending upon final disposition, may require action by the city council, first of which was the Press Cafe up on High Street across from Goodwill. And as we know, that project was approved conditionally with the traffic signal on High Street. Ultimately, the acceptance of a traffic signal as an off-site improvement would need to be accepted by the city council. Before running it to full council, which it has not been to yet, we did funnel it through the city's Public Works and Environment Committee just to get a pulse of council. As I think most members know, there are four members of council that sit on that committee. Absent details of specific elements of that project, there was favorable review of adding that traffic signal there. Obviously, it's just a subcommittee of council, and there was no formal action taken, but we did sort of vet it out, and again, there was no strong pushback, I would describe it that way. Similarly, we talked about the pending project at 22 Green Street on the corner of Fayette and Green, and at our last meeting, the idea of making Fayette a one-way street, perhaps to enhance on-street parking capacity, was discussed, and again, absent details, but that same committee felt favorably about that idea. So just for the planning board's information, that's where that stands. And I'll conclude my report for tonight. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Witham. Strafford Regional Planning Commission update. Mr. Richardson.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. A couple of things. Last month, I mentioned that we did some reorganization with the new committee chair and the executive committee, and I was appointed as an alternate for that committee. I'm now a regular member of that committee as of last week because of additional changes. And also, the Regional Planning Commission is planning on doing a lot of local presentations in different towns across our area and at different events across our area, and perhaps council meetings and that kind of thing, or select boards' meetings. And it'll be an opportunity for the public to ask questions, especially in the local events, where we'll have tables set up for people to approach the regional planning commissioners and the people who work there and ask questions. What does the Strafford Regional Planning Commission do? So I'm looking forward to participating in those as the next few weeks come along.
Hi, thank you. 2030 Committee, Mr. Berry.
No report, Mr. Chair.
Housing Committee, Mr. Horton, do you have anything? Next, we'll move on to old business. Before we sell it all to public hearings, I'd like to ask everybody to please turn off or mute your cell phones and electronic devices, and if you care to speak this evening, please come up to the podium, state your name and address, or your affiliation. If you need to stray from the podium, you can use the portable mic next to the podium. Under old business, item 3A, continued from July 16, 2025. Mannheim, New Hampshire is seeking a site plan amendment to remove landscape islands and install additional perimeter pavement on property located at 221 Route 108 in the commercial industrial CI District Assessors Map 45, Lot 20, Site Number 072025. Director Mears, you have anything to add to this?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The applicant was continued from the July 17 planning board meeting to allow for the following items to be addressed, to allow the applicant time to complete the conditions of the last approval. Shane did provide some photos regarding the landscaping that's been installed. Just to note, the applicant has installed some irrigation, but some of that landscaping is going to need to be replaced. You can see that in the photos. And the applicant has hydroseeded along Blackwater Road and along Route 108, and installed additional landscaping along the perimeter of the sign. So, and the applicant did replace the cherry trees, and third-party review has been received for this project, and this is ready for the board to discuss.
Thank you. Entertained a motion to take off table and continue to this meeting?
So moved.
Mr. Witham, motion made by Mr. Witham, seconded by Mr. Horton. Any discussion? All those in favor raise your right hand.
Yes, thank you. I would just applaud Mannheim for their work on the landscaping and the installation of the broken light fixture. That was an impediment at the last meeting. That has been done, so I just want to publicly acknowledge that I do applaud them for their work pretty diligently on that.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor raise your right hand. Opposed? Mr. Stoll.
How's that? Better? All right, thank you. We didn't make a lot of progress last month, but the applicant did since last month's meeting. The landscaping looks very much improved out there. There was an existing irrigation system that had been installed years ago but has not been active for a number of years, so it took quite a bit of work to get that going, but they do have active irrigation now. The plantings are in, the hydroseed's done. As you mentioned, there are a few shrubberies already that need to be replaced, but they're aware of that. The landscape vendor is aware of that. There is the bond in place for landscaping, should it be a recurring thing. But I think we're up and running at this point where hopefully we can discuss our project this evening, which is twofold. One is, as we spoke last month, the removal of the islands, which, again, is to facilitate additional inventory storage as well as traffic flow for the auction vehicles. And again, I think that the fact that we've done the additional landscaping as designed in the January approval very much screens that area so that the internal islands aren't as critical as they are in your typical parking lot. So we request that waiver. And in addition, additional mitigation we are providing. The six island trees that are coming out, I think we've got something in the neighborhood of 20 new plantings that we're doing out front along Blackwater Road and on 108 in front of that corner. They had to, again, help mitigate for the loss of the eight trees or six trees, I guess it is, that's in the islands that would be coming out. So that's one aspect of the application. The other is the additional inventory area that we're proposing by the sales barn, and we've proposed that new pavement area that, it's only about 8,000 square feet, but it triggered, over 5,000 square feet triggered the review by the third-party drainage, which has been completed. We did receive this week a comment letter with a few minor comments that will be shortly addressed, and I think, again, I think it was pretty well-vetted at SRTC meetings now with the third-party drainage review, and hopefully we can discuss things this evening. Thank you.
Right, thank you. This time, I'll reopen the public hearing. Anybody care to comment on the application?
Hi, my name is Elizabeth Sarno-Hill. I live at 124 Blackwater Road across from Mannheim, and I do want to applaud the fact that they did get the hydroseed again, and we have the strip of bark mulch. My concern is when they talk about extra perimeter, not landscaping, but turning it into more parking. So I printed out the maps, and I'm still having a hard time figuring out what's exactly going to happen in front of my house. Is it going to be left as green, or is it going to be like the grass, the strip of landscaping, the fence, and then parking lot? Or are they leaving some greenery in there? I mean, that's my question. I don't know. I know, looking at the map, it's unclear. I printed out the different maps, so I just, I don't know if that's something that Mannheim could answer, and that's my biggest concern, you know? I live across from it, you know, I know it's an industrial area, but I do want it to look as nice as possible because it affects my home value, you know? I pay taxes. Right, thank you.
Right, thank you. Anybody else care to comment? Director Mears, is there any additional correspondence since last meeting?
None this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Seeing an unenclosed public hearing, I ask Mr. Stoll if he can address the public comment.
Certainly. The, if we look at your sheet, SP1 or SP2, these gray shaded areas here are the proposed new pavement, so there isn't anything getting any closer to Blackwater Road here. What we're doing is, we've got an existing space, spaces along here that we're extending them to a double depth. So there isn't anything proposed closer to Blackwater. There's nothing proposed closer to kill the street. It's all pretty much confined in the same building block that we had initially. This is all the area that was disturbed during the original construction for, again, this was the detention area that was part of it. It's all land that was originally contemplated and future development that this is happening.
Right, thank you. Questions from the board? Mr. Witham.
Thanks. If you could, back to the plan set that you were referencing there. So I know that those gray shaded areas are generally behind what used to be the maintenance garage for Key Auto, so, and that is the extent of work being done here. I thought there was some discussion about removing some of the traffic island and trees as well.
Yes, that was, the waiver request deals with these interior islands.
All of them?
Yeah, that we're looking to, again, get this formal striping in to provide a one-way circulation through, and getting rid of those islands will help with the inventory as well as the turning movements that they need to do.
So that's a total of eight traffic islands, and each has a tree?
One, two, three, four, five, six, and seven, eight have, these presently don't have trees, but we propose to replant trees. Yes, I guess it's a loss of eight.
Mr. Richardson.
First of all, thank you for doing the, all the landscaping along there. That went in fairly quickly, and it's much appreciated, at least when I drive by. On the islands removal and the cars that will be parked in there, will, my question is, will the cars be turned from, if we're looking at the map, north, south, to east, west, kind of a thing there?
It's actually, the lines we show on the plans are proposed striping, so they'll lay out as proposed there. So it's all perpendicular islands, yep.
Okay, okay. That's good, thanks. That's it for me.
Mr. Witham?
Yeah, just a general comment. I have no issue with the extension of the paved surface behind the maintenance garage. It doesn't encroach upon any abutter in any meaningful way. I don't think it'll even be noticeable. I really don't have any apprehension with the traffic islands to the north of the site. I don't think that provides any screening or any effect. Just kind of curious what other board members think about the, at least the three traffic islands that are closest to Blackwater Road. There are trees there. I'll call them somewhat mature for the site. I think it does add some screening value, so I guess I'm okay with a lot of this, but maybe not all of it, but I could be convinced otherwise. I'm just planting a seed with fellow board members.
Mr. Horton?
I think you raise a great point, Council Witham. I would agree that, you know, that they do provide some screening, but also kind of delineate a travel way to help kind of direct traffic or circulation throughout the site. So I think you raise a great point, and I think your comment has a lot of value in kind of preserving some of the screening, buffering, and site conditions. I think just to kind of expand and offer additional comments for the abutter, the existing conditions on Blackwater, as far as side of the road, the fence, all that remains as it stands today. So there'll be minor changes within the law itself, so I think it's a valid point. That's all I got, thanks.
Ms. McDermott?
Yeah, so to Mr. Witham's point and Mr. Horton's, the trees that are being removed on those islands, now, there is some question as to whether they provide some screening already, but I drive by that road and that spot, I have been watching that closely, by the way.
Okay.
And good job to the owner for getting all of that done. It looks so much better than it did last month. But those trees that are coming out, I feel like the screening is, it doesn't really screen the cars. Like, you can see all the cars because the greenery pops is kind of higher than that. But it could provide some screening, I suppose. The question I have is, the plantings that you're planning to do in their place, will those provide additional screening that whatever the trees coming out currently provide?
Our approach was that what we proposed in January provided really good screening on that section. And again, they're not mature. They're at planting size, that if you plant mature tree, that they grow into each other, yadda, yadda, yadda. We know that. So they are, they're small. They're going to get big. So they're going to do more screening than they do right now. But instead of supplementing that, because we thought we had got there already with that, we took, and we did landscaping out front that was going to provide a softening to the site in general as opposed to the inventory, so that the building at the corner of 108 and Blackwater Road, that's getting new landscaping to improve the overall look of the site as opposed to providing screening.
Okay. Follow-up question. To the point with the question of, one of you mentioned the traffic, you know, the, yeah, the traffic flow. Thank you so much. Is this, it's my understanding that this new design is meant to improve traffic flow?
It is.
And kind of take away some of the islands impede the way that they do the auctions, like they go in and then they come out?
Exactly. There's a really defined flow that they have, that the islands, as they are, inhibit a little bit, and they also provide a little bit of additional inventory where we don't have to add more pavement elsewhere on the site as well. So it's a double effect of helping the flow. They do a one-way circulation. They start off in a space, they go in, they drive through the sales barn, they do the bidding process, and they land right back where they started. So it's a very regimented flow. They have all their staff are the drivers, so we don't really need islands for directing people, or they're all staff that are out there driving around. So we thought the islands aren't as critical as they would be specified in your normal parking, shopping lot, shopping center parking lot. It's, at this point, this is a different type of site.
Right. Okay, yeah, no. Personally, I think if it kind of eases the flow of things, that's, I don't really have any problem with this project as it is. Thank you.
Mr. Rhodes?
Yep, so a couple of points here that I wanted to raise and also address some of the comments that Mr. Witham made. Looking at those three to four islands that are closest to the Blackwater roadside, I think one thing that we may be missing here a little bit when we think about them is providing traffic delineation, is the change in use of the site. When it was an auto dealership before, although we're still dealing with an auto sales environment, where it was a dealership before, public access, you needed to have some spacing on that, you need to direct people who are coming in from the street to look at vehicles. It's a different sort of auto sales environment now. It's an auction environment. People who are coming in here are dealers, they've got a very regimented traffic structure that runs through here, so having those in place doesn't really serve a traffic purpose. What they could potentially do is some screening, but I think Ms. McNair is absolutely right here, you're not getting a lot of screening from the car space. You've got trunks and then greenery on top of it. I do apologize, I left one piece of the plans for this site at home tonight. Can you run through the species that you've got planted on the Blackwater side? Just in general, what's down there?
Let me get you a copy of the plan here that you-
Perfect, thank you, ma'am.
If I can.
Thanks, appreciate it. So let's see. So what's along the Blackwater side, cedar, fir, bayberry, inkberry? Okay, so all of that sort of stuff, particularly once it grows in, is lower line, and most of it's going to be in like the eight to 10-foot range or a little bit shorter, so that covers a lot of the screening from the Blackwater roadside. So taking those couple of things into account, I think there's a good argument made here that the screening that's in place on Blackwater Road serves a much better purpose than those three trees that are in place on the current islands that they want to remove. So I would argue that removing those serves the business and doesn't lose anything for neighbors or abutters. Also, just wanted to mention, because when Mr. Stoll walked through where the pavement is going in, the member of the public who asked about that probably couldn't see the maps in place, to just orient her to what was being pointed out here, if you're sitting on Blackwater looking across at the old Key Auto Maintenance Barn, the vast majority of it's completely behind that barn, so invisible from the street probably now, certainly once that vegetation grows in. There's a small piece that would be from that orientation to the right of the barn, which I think would be adequately screened as well. So I wouldn't expect any more of an industrial appearance, and once that landscaping gets a couple of years of growth in, much, much less than you've got now. All that said, with the changes that have been made on the site by Mannheim coming up to the original plan, and what they're proposing to do along 108, I think we're getting a better screened site and one that serves the business purpose better, so it's a fair compromise.
Thank you.
Any further questions from board? Entertain a motion for regional impact.
I'd move that the project does not have any potential for regional impact.
Motion made by Mr. Witham, seconded by Mr. Berry. Any discussion? All those in favor raise your right hand. Opposed? Motion passes. Waiver request, one waiver request, vehicular circulation and parking. Does anybody have motion? Mr. Gilmet?
Make a motion, we accept it as-
If you want, turn your mic on, please.
I make a motion, we accept that proposal as it is proposed.
Motion made by Mr. Gilmet. Seconded by Mr. Richardson. Discussion. All those in favor raise your right hand. Opposed? Waiver is granted.
Thank you.
This time, I'd like to invite Director Mears to review conditions of approval.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Plan revisions revise SP1. Note 17 to clarify that 82 parking spacing is customer-employee parking spaces. Applicants shall address any outstanding comments from Horsley Winton, third-party review, to the satisfaction of the Director of Planning and Community Development. Please list all waivers granted on the plan. Replace the Quanzine Cherry with Plantus Acerfolia Exclamation, Plaintree, or any other appropriate species. Conditions that must be met prior to final approval. The final plants shall bear the stamp and signature of a engineer, licensed land surveyor, and landscape architect. Federal and state permits, all federal and state permits shall be in place prior, before plan signing and recording, including New Hampshire DOT driveway permit, a signed certificate of understanding for the stormwater management, maintenance, and inspection plan, acknowledging the responsibilities identified in the stormwater management, maintenance, and inspection plan. Conditions to be completed prior to the start of site work. Landscaping's survival security, 10% of the total cost of landscaping or a minimum of $500, whichever is greater, shall be held for a period of two growing seasons to guarantee the survival of the landscaping installation. Conditions applicable during and after construction. Prior to the issuance of certificate of occupancy, the applicant shall have installed signage on-site to alert those attempting to exit, enter the wrong direction of the tiger teeth on-site. Applicants shall provide the fire department with any required equipment and training to disable the tiger teeth in the event that they respond to an after-hours emergency building or vehicle fire. There shall be no additional or new impact to the wetlands or the wetlands buffer without first receiving a conditional use permit. A copy of this completed stormwater inspection and maintenance log shall be received prior to July 1st. This is an ongoing condition of approval. All landscaping shown on the plan shall be maintained, and any dead or dying vegetation shall be replaced in a timely manner. All outdoor lighting shall be downlit and shielded, so no direct light is visible from adjacent properties and roadways. All repair and service work shall be performed within an enclosed building. Any used or discarded automotive parts or equipment located in any open area outside an enclosed building must be screened from view. No outside storage of stock equipment or residual used equipment shall be located in any open space outside an enclosed building. As-built plans are required as part of this project.
That's it, thank you very much. Any board comments on the conditions? Looking for a site plan motion. Mr. Berry?
All right, Mr. Chair, I move that the application of Mannheim, New Hampshire, for a site plan amendment to remove landscape islands and install additional perimeter pavement on a property located at 221 Route 108 be approved.
Motion made by Mr. Berry, seconded by Mr. Rhodes. Any discussion?
With the conditions as always?
Yes.
Be agreeing with that amendment? Any further discussion? All those in favor raise your right hand. Opposed? Site plan is approved.
Thank you very much.
Next item under old business, item 3B, continued from July 16, 2025. Horizons Engineering is seeking a lot line adjustment between properties located at 22 and 28 Green Street. Assessors Map 10, lots 177 and 178, and site plan approval for 59-unit residential building with associated parking infrastructure located at 28 Green Street in the Business B District. Assessors Map 10, Lot 178, Site Number 032025, and Sub Number 022025. Director Mears, anything to add?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The applicant was continued from the July planning board meeting with the following items that needed to be addressed, to allow further development of the site plans and third-party review. The applicant has provided Exhibit A, an off-site parking map, as part of the revisions. Third-party review reports from Horsley Winton and Wright Pierce have been received and completed and provided to the applicant. Public Works did provide a memo for discussion in relation to any off-site improvements for the project. And also, the applicant is proposing to demolish the existing building and construct a new residential building with off-site parking. Applicant is proposing to construct 59 residential units. Also with this, the applicant is proposing a lot line adjustment, and this does comply with zoning. The property is located in the Business District with Form Base Code overlay, Area 4, residential sub-district overlay. Residential multifamily is permitted use with a requirement that the building be at least two stories. The Business District does not have a minimum lot size requirement, and this is ready for the board to continue review.
Entertain a motion- Entain a motion, remove from the table to continue for this meeting. Motion made by Mr. Berry. Seconded by Mr. Rhodes. Any discussion? Polls in favor raise your right hand. Posed? This time I'd like to invite 22 and 28 Green Street to continue their presentation.
Andrew Peroni from Horizons Engineering, representing the ownership, 28 Green Street Summersworth LLC, for this project here at 28 Green Street. Again, as mentioned, we were here at last month's meeting, giving our presentation. And for the most part, I think the board had some positive feedback for us. There is two minor comments by Mr. Witham and Mr. Berry that I'd like to address on our site plans for some things we addressed. But after that, unless the board has any other questions for the site plan, I'd like to proceed to our conceptual layout for parking on Fayette Street. Just so I know, that was kind of the hot topic issue from our presentation last time, and then take it from there. So that's all right with the board? Okay. So the two main comments here, I apologize for the clarity. I think this will be better sought for the Fayette parking concept, so this is why I tried to go with the projected route. But the two main comments, first one was by Mr. Witham. He requested that parking be striped on Green Street from Franklin to Washington Street. We do have that shown on our site plan. See if I can get my cursor in there. It's showing on both sides of the street, right on what would be the west side of the building, it's showing arrows to both sides. This comment right here, it's showing, we're going to put striped parking on both sides of Green Street between Franklin and Washington. We don't show it on the site plan as it's not actually part of the site, so we just didn't show it on there, but we're committing to doing it, so we put it on the site plan there. The second comment by Mr. Berry was for us to state that we will repair the concrete sidewalk along the street, and so we are showing that with this comment right here. So again, we are committing to making those repairs completely to finish the project out. So with that, I'll go to the Fayette Street concept. So again, before we get into it, I just want to kind of remind the board that this is conceptual only, it's kind of non-binding. As Mr. Witham said, we'd have to get approval from the board first before we proceed with discussions with the city, city council, and all the departments to make sure everyone was on board with what we're proposing. But this is kind of just our attempt at a high level, you know, review what we thought would be best to, you know, kind of appease everyone with our layout. So this first sheet, I have two sheets here, and the intent is to show, one, the parking layout, but also to show the ability for fire engines to make the turns from Green Street onto Fayette Street and down into the individual alleyways. Based on the topography and the way the site is laid out, we felt best to make the one-way traffic go from Green Street down to Main Street. As the hill would go down, from a maintenance standpoint, we thought that would be easier and just from an overall traffic flow, that seemed to make the most sense. So in this layout, you can see that we have, we're showing the parking, our fire engines are able to make the turn onto Fayette Street and avoid all of our proposed parking lots or parking spaces, make the turn into, say, this alleyway to help, you know, provide services for these residential units, while also still, they can still make the access and turn down to this alleyway as well. Within this parking concept, you know, again, this is conceptual, we're showing a total of five spaces right at the beginning or kind of the top portion of Fayette Street, with an additional space. Our intent was to potentially reserve one space for map 10 lot 15, 28 to 30 Fayette Street. I know the ownership, the residents there, were here at the meeting last week, they raised some concerns about having parking, I believe for, it was a elderly resident relative that lived there, so we're committed to having a space there for them. In this next bank of parking, we have two spaces right here, we're allotting towards map 10 lot 14, I believe, 22 Fayette Street. If you look at Google Maps or any sort of, you know, kind of street imagery, this lot here, they generally have parking for four within the parking boundaries or within the lot boundaries. So our, what our hope was that two of the spaces could still be utilized by access through the alleyway, while two could be accessed through Fayette Street, you know, with normal traffic patterns. With these two allocated for here, we would still have an additional 15 spaces on the south side of Fayette Street within this middle bank. On this top half, we already have kind of shown 16 spaces, but that's with perpendicular parking with angled, we'd lose two, we'd be down to 14, but still with the traffic flow and the alleyway, the width between the two different rows, we still show, you know, plenty of room to allow for all this parking right here as well. Again, we show fire engine being able to make the turn safely onto this alleyway, and then finally another bank of nine parking spaces here. Right now, there are currently, I believe, the number I have is four angled spaces outside the historic building. They're also facing towards Main Street. So even just from that angle, it seems kind of a safety issue to have them right there, so we figured this would be a better flow anyways with the traffic flowing this way. Another point to address, I know we showed it in our site plan last time, but again, highlighting, you know, we're showing three crosswalks across Fayette Street. One here at the top of Fayette Street, at the intersection with Green Street, again at the eastern side of the proposed building to go across Fayette Street. And then the third one would be here, the intersection of Elm Street and Green, again, going all the way across. This last image, this is, again, just to show, you know, based on our layout, that we believe a fire engine can safely and effectively still make the turns onto Fayette Street, this time coming from a, from the north to the south, turning onto Fayette Street, still making, still making the turn within this first alleyway, and again, also showing it, making it safely and effectively into this alleyway as well. I think that's kind of the highlights of the overall concept. Again, this is still very preliminary, you know, we, you know, welcome any comments from the board with some, you know, understanding that, you know, this still could change with some discussions, further discussions with city council and other city departments, but other than that, I'd like to open the floor for comments.
Mr. Witham?
Yeah, I'll be quick. Thank you for the plan note regarding parking spaces to be delineated on Green Street. I might further ask that we be a bit more specific there with regard to the size of the spaces, not the width from the curb out to the fog line, but the length dimension. I know that we have spaces out front of City Hall, which I think many residents would characterize as very generous. I'm not sure if they need to be quite that big, but I don't want them tiny either, given dimensions of some cars. So I would just like, you know, sort of that to be called out so that we're not just shooting from the hip in terms of a dimensional aspect for that striping when it takes place. I very much like the concept of the one-way on Fayette, sort of as depicted. I'm generally in favor of the concept that you propose. The one thing I might pause at a little bit is the mid-block crosswalk. I know generally, we don't favor mid-block crosswalks. I'm a little less concerned on this street where it's going to be one-way, limited traffic, but if that doesn't need to be there, it might actually generate another spot or two of parking, which I think I would favor over a mid-block crosswalk. The only other thing that I would call out, that I would like to see maybe two of along Fayette, or at least one, is a handicap call-out for handicap delineated space or spaces on Fayette. So the only other note I would have is that there's some specific delineation for certain parcels. I don't think we do that anywhere else in the city. I'm not saying it's not a good idea, I just wonder about the mechanics of that and if we can even do it. So I like it in theory, but I don't know how to do it. So that would be something that you'd need to flush out with staff before we get to the council level. But, and you know, the other thing I would note is that where there are the crosswalks delineated, I would like both, both sides of those crosswalks to have appropriate tactile warning strips, appropriate tip downs at those locations. So a detail around what you're proposing, but conceptually, I like it. So thank you.
I have a question for also the staff. Back, it's about 25, maybe 30 years ago, when we approved 62 Green Street, the apartment building on the corner of Franklin Street and Green. They had a condition where their parking would be provided, they had some agreement with the owner that used to own parking spots on the corner of Elm Street and Fayette Street, just below the old 28 Green Shabbat's dairy. Whatever happened to that? Because there's no parking around the 62 Green Street building, it's just the building and there's no other property. And supposedly, the parking spots that they're speaking of, using for their own spot, were delineated for people who lived at 62 Green.
Yes, so from what I understand, that agreement has been terminated. The developer may be able to speak to this, but-
Rob Preveady for the applicant. I think what you're referring to is the spaces that were previously eased on the land of 20, what's now 22 Green Street, and as part of that project that is mint was removed. So the, so those spots are just part of the 22 Green Street project, but I'd have to, you know, confirm that we're talking about the same spaces.
Okay, so that parking's gone now?
So that parking is owned by 22 Green Street.
Okay, so what happens to the condition that we originally approved 62 Green Street? Does that affect anything on that?
I would have to go back and see what that agreement is. There has been-
Yeah, I don't know if it's something that expired after a while, or-
Yeah.
Because they're claiming them for their new project, which is fine, but I also remember that it was a condition of approving the 62 Green Street property back when.
Just to clarify that point, though, we're not claiming those spots for this project at 28 Green Street. We have no interest in those. That plan that Andrew just shared was really just for your consideration in the future if you want to take action on Fayette Street. We don't need it for our project. And we would like it as property owners, I think would be a good improvement for Fayette Street, but it's not part of our application and kind of double that to the 62 Green Street. That's not really our hunt. We all know that it's not affected by our application.
Okay. I'd just like to see it cleared up before they move ahead, just see what happened to that agreement.
Yeah, so-
Statuses.
So part of this application, in the notice of decision, we said the applicant will submit an alternative parking solution plan with off-site location, so that would be cleared up with staff. We could look into that-
Okay, thank you.
At the staff level, yep.
Questions on board? Mr. Witham?
Yeah, just to follow up with regard to Fayette Street, again, not part of their application, I would see the restriping of Fayette Street, the crosswalks and some of those things as a reasonable off-site improvement borne by the applicant. But to be clear, those parking spots could be used by anybody. If the museum was having an open house on a Sunday and people wanted to park in all of those spaces, they theoretically could, right? Unless we reserve some for certain units, and again, that detail needs to be ironed out. But I see the delineation of the parking spots on Green Street, the restriping of Fayette, and the making it a one-way as a reasonable off-site improvement for this applicant, given parking demands, traffic flow, all of those sorts of things.
And to be clear, we, the striping and all that, that was fine, that was, we're accepting that. What I was saying wasn't part of it, it was like the ability to make Fayette-
I understood that, I just wanted to be very clear here.
Yep, we're on the same page.
Yes, we are, thank you.
Mr. Rhodes?
Regarding the Fayette Street one-way plan and the parking crosswalks that are on there, in full agreement with Mr. Witham, I think it's an extremely good idea, opens up a lot of space down there. I'd call back to where I grew up in Nashua and the downtown area of that city, apart from its main street, is almost entirely one-ways, which makes things quite a bit safer with the kind of residential density that that area of Nashua has and that we're approaching down here now. So I think instituting some one-way streets, particularly in areas that have high-density projects coming in, is a very good public safety and parking move. On that mid-block crosswalk, normally I'd be in complete agreement with you that it creates more of a hazard than a plus, but I believe from looking at the maps, that that mid-block crosswalk goes directly into the downstairs entrance of the proposed apartment building.
Yep, and the reason why we were proposing that in concept was because, you know, if you look at the plans, the same parking spaces, we don't want people like walking behind the cars as they're pulling out, so we thought we tried to divert pedestrian traffic across the street then down to Main Street.
Yeah, I'm looking at the positioning for that and thinking that those spaces on Fayette Street are going to be prized ones for residents of this unit. They're probably going to be coming in and out of there with groceries, packages, things like that, so that mid-block crosswalk actually makes a lot of sense here under that circumstance. So this is the exception to that general rule, I think. But the Fayette Street plan looks excellent. I hope that goes forward.
Mr. Richardson?
Yes, thank you. I've got a question for staff, and at the last meeting when we were talking about, and I'm all, I'm really good with Fayette Street being one-way, we did have that conversation. We had one resident that was here who pretty much shook her head and said that that would be a good thing in her opinion. Have we heard from anybody else on the street?
No, we have not.
Okay, because it is out there, it's been in the media and that kind of thing, so I'm just curious if anybody, anybody in the neighborhood, anybody else had commented on it. So if not, then, you know, I'm all for it, so.
Mr. Horton?
I'll just add my comment. I agree that the Fayette Street plan looks excellent, improves the safety, the flow, and additional parking, so I think it's a great plan to move forward.
Mr. Gilmat?
Big improvement in neighborhood. I have a favor of your plan, well presented.
Thank you.
Mr. Witham?
Yeah, I'll get off of Fayette, let me go on to Green Street. I do like the note that Mr. Berry suggested be on there about that improvement of that sidewalk. Have heard from at least one resident in that area that improving that sidewalk would be a step in the right direction, so I appreciate that by the applicant. I would also note, just based upon the project that's currently under construction, the water tap on the Green Street has settled, that'll need to be redone, so I'm assuming we'll need a new water tap on the Green Street. And that does bring me to a question about a Wright Pierce memo that was provided to our Public Works Department. I assume the applicant has seen this, Director Mears?
Yes, that's correct.
Which just speaks to the age of the water pipe on Green Street out there, as over 100 years old. From what I understood in the memo, it would support domestic water use and fire flows, it's just the age of the pipe that is of concern. So I don't know if the applicant has any comment on this, if your engineers looked at this at all, or-
We, so as I understand it, this line services like a- We, so as I understand it, this line services like a bunch of properties on Green Street.
Correct.
And we will be paying, I think it's just part of the permits, a water tap fee, which will be pretty substantial, probably excess of $100,000, I think.
$150,000.
$158,000. So, we're making, I think that's kind of what that goes to services?
It's at least part of it, right?
Yeah, at least part of it. And so, I mean, our feeling was just that, you know...
One other, so 22 Green, we paid $372,700. So, between the two buildings, it's $530,000.
Sure, and I don't think that, if you think I'm heading towards, hey, replace the water line, that's not where I'm going.
We want modern infrastructure as much as...
Right, I just, and I think it's just, it goes without saying that as you're tapping that water line, if it is damaged beyond the tap area because of your excavation work, that would be the responsibility of the applicant to repair.
Agree 100%, sorry.
Okay. I saw where you're...
We got nervous when we saw the memo.
Your blinking yellow light started flashing, I think, so I get it. So, thank you for that. I just wanted to make that note because that's at least one of the risks with the old water pipe. They're all good until you start tinkering with them, right? So, I just want to be mindful of that as you do it.
Any other comments from the board? Okay, with that, the next course of action is what, Director Mears?
To vote on the application, or we have to open up a public hearing. Sorry.
And the last meeting, we approved the application?
Yes.
Okay.
And we voted on the waivers. Or we didn't approve that. We accept the application as complete.
Okay. Okay, this time I'll open a public hearing. Anybody care to comment on this project?
Attorney Kimberly Shaw in Ward 1. And I actually did the easement for the Fayette Street parking. So, my memory was that we deeded it. We didn't ease it. And it came from one parcel and was deeded to 62 Green. I don't think you can reuse that parcel. Maybe my easement wasn't great, but it went with 62 Green as an actual usage. And it was, I believe, 20 spots. And we did an actual, measured it out with a measuring stick down that whole left side of Fayette, as you're going down Fayette. To go with that Green Street, which used to be the old McKay's Variety Store, don't know if you guys all remember that, but it was this big blue building and had zero parking, except on Green Street. So, we did an easement for so many parking to allow that project to go through. My concern is that we are double-counting parking spaces, and my math isn't great because I picked law school instead of math, but I didn't see 59 parking spaces that they talked about. My other concern is that you cannot look at this project as a vacuum. You all recognize there is a monstrosity going up with, what, 158 units, that is all trying to use the same parking. And they're kind of double-counting. We're going to use some parking from this, we're going to use some parking from the agent's house, we're going to use some parking from Fayette. Well, guess what? That giant apartment building that is already going up is going to use a lot of that same parking. And I don't know if you guys drive down Green Street often. I'm there pretty much every day, heading to Dover District Court. Go drive down it. Go drive down it now and see, without the new apartment building that's going up, the four-story, I believe it's 158 units, without 59 more units, Green Street is full. It's full in the morning when I go to court, it's full when I'm coming back at 4:00. It is full. It is full with the people who live there, because a lot of those buildings don't have their own parking. They're all parked on Green Street. All four are putting marks on Green Street so people can park a little better, but it is not going to give you more parking. That parking is full. And I know, Counselor Witham, that you have said a parking problem is a wonderful thing to have. What I would suggest, however, is that when you have no parking and people are going to park wherever they find a space, we just did a parking study for Stafford County Regional Planning Commission, and I did three hours of that study, walked the laps, three hours. And people are parked in all sorts of places. They want to go to folded, they're parked in handicap spots, they're parked in clearly delineated not-spots, they're parked in fire lanes. And that's without that apartment building opened up. So, what I would request, as a person who's going to be driving down Green Street, who's going to be trying to navigate it when there's snow and we're trying to do snow removal, is that before this project is approved, you wait and see what happens with the opening of the 158 or whatever units it is now, I know they got more units, and see what the parking looks like and make them do a parking study. Please, make them do a parking study. Because, think about it, the whole goal is to give housing. We're not even going to talk about the fact that none of these apartments are going to be affordable by our constituents. Maybe some of you watched my presentation to the City Council on that. None of these are going to be affordable by any of the people who are living here. Hopefully, the shipyard, if they can afford it. So, we're running our constituents that already live there out of parking and out of town. We know we have elderly folks there, we know we have handicap folks there, and Counselor Witham correctly pointed out, we can't restrict those parking spots. So, we're making people who already live here, who already pay rent or are already paying taxes, lose their parking spots or have to fight for parking spots with all of these apartment buildings. I understand you want to approve development. I'm not against development. And you've not seen me ever before you before, or ever before the council, objecting to development. What I'm objecting to is the parking problem that this is going to create. And at least, take a step back and say, let's see what this parking problem that this giant building is going to create looks like before you just plop another 58 units or 59 units down on that street. And by the way, again, I'm not a math number, but I don't think even the parking spots that they just gave you equated to 59. I got 49. So, even using the Fayette spots that are already taken, even using Green Street, which by the way is already full, they don't have 59 parking spots. So, where do they get those? And by the way, that giant apartment building, this idea that we're going to rent spaces downtown, again, I would suggest you look at the parking study data and how many people were parked in fire lanes, how many people were parked in handicap spots, how many people were parked in spots because they were too lazy to walk. And we're not going to see that happen, or we're going to see the same problem. So, you have to get fire down there. If they're all parked in the fire lanes, that doesn't help. If they're all parked in the handicap lanes, that doesn't help. Just please, take a step back, do a parking study when we see what is happening with this other building before you approve 59 units right on top of something that is already there. To be clear, I approve development. I don't want it done willy-nilly. I don't want it impacting other people. When buildings burn because the fire trucks can't get there, we're all going to be to blame. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else care to comment?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Matt Tenola. I'm a butter of 22 Green Street, and if the combination of 22 and 28 gets approved tonight, I'll be a direct butter of both properties, on one side of me and behind me. So, I have a couple of questions on the parking on Fayette. If I'm correct, that's owned by the city, the street's owned by the city, and the striping that they're going to be putting it on would also be owned by the city, but a few spots would be dedicated to building owners that are but on Fayette's side. Is that correct? In their proposal? So, with that in mind, if a few spots are dedicated to a butters on Fayette Street, I ask that the same amount of spots be extended to me for number 16 and 18 on Green Street. The next thing is, if Fayette is one-way going down, excuse me, Church Court, which is the street abutting my property and abutting number 22, I think would be dangerous to have two-way. It should also be one-way straight down to Elm Street, because I know from personal experience and other people that I've talked to, that have tried to come out of Church Court and take a left onto Green Street. There's a hill there, and people speed up over that hill, and you literally can't judge it properly unless you put some type of light there or something. I think it should be one-way going down. Other than that, I don't have any real issues with what's going on with the property right now on 22, but let me see if I've got everything here. Oh, the only other thing I had questions about is any spots that are leased or striped on Fayette or whatever for the purpose of possibly them using them for their tenants, what happens when there's a snow ban? Because a lot of spots will go away instantly, and now we've got a problem. So, those are my questions, those are my concerns. That's basically it.
Thank you. Anybody else care to comment? Director Mears, is there any correspondence?
None this evening, Mr. Chairman.
This time, I'd like to ask 22, 28 Green Street to address the public comments.
I think that's the only thing we'd really say is that, just again, on Fayette Street, that parking is up to the city. We're not, we don't need it, we're not claiming it as part of our site plan application. It's just an idea for the City Council and EPW to consider. I think it would be a good, a good one personally, but we don't need it for our parking. And just to clear up along that, you know, parking easement, there's no separate parcel created, and we're not proposing to use those spaces as part of our project. Like, we're not proposing a shared parking plan with 28 Green Street. But I'll just refer you to our application. Again, we have a neighborhood parking plan there that shows potential off-site areas where we would be looking to put our parking, including a parcel that we own at 67 Elm Street, and that provides the bulk of the parking for the project. So, I think most of the concerns about parking are maybe a little bit of a frolic as to the Fayette Street, because it's just an idea. Yeah.
Yeah, the only other comment I have on the parking is the new state law, that it's, parking's only one spot required per unit now. So, with that said, you know, I'm trying not to connect both projects, but the 22 Green Street project actually has abundance of parking once that goes into law.
Yeah, and we'll obviously be looking at what our tenants want as to parking demand as well, so...
Okay, thank you. Comments from the board? Mr. Witham?
Yeah, and I do think it gets a little bit confusing talking about Fayette Street. I think it is a reasonable off-site improvement to be borne by the applicant, but these are city parking spots, much like the ones are on Green Street. Now, I'm not naive enough to believe that it's going to be first come, first served because they're closer, right? So, who gets there first is going to get those spaces, and it may well be people that occupy 22 Green Street, 28 Green Street, that don't live in either one of those, that live in, on Fayette Street, right? It's a city street where we have just parking available. We do have leased spaces to the applicant on Main Street, a block away. I agree, people are going to park in the closest spot, not the furthest spot, but there are spaces called out there. And at least in terms of this project and what our regulations require, the applicant has provided us with a parking strategy to meet that demand. We don't like our regulations in terms of allowing that. Those could be changed, but they are complying with what our regulations are. And as was noted, the state continues to, I could argue I don't like it, but they are telling us what we can and cannot do, and they are saying that it's one space ultimately. So, there you go. So, we have that. Big picture, it is in the owner of these apartment buildings to provide a parking strategy that is convenient, that is easy for their tenants. Because if it becomes difficult, it's going to become difficult to rent their units, and that's not in their business interest to do that. So, I think that is important. I do appreciate the concerns raised about snow removal that exist around the city in many spots right now, and property owners develop a strategy for where people can park, and the city has assisted with that strategy in some small ways by providing some designated areas. And maybe we're going to need to look to expand those designated areas for snow emergencies that happen a handful of times a year, maybe even a few more this past winter because we had sort of a real winter. I would also note, although it doesn't need to be woven into any condition here with this project, we can flush it out with city traffic safety, but the notion of Church Court being one-way from Green to Elm really resonates with me, so I do like that. It is a difficult crest there on Green Street. But again, that can be handled through city traffic safety, doesn't have to be woven into this project. Again, that would require council action. So, those are just my general comments, feedback in terms of a butter concerns, where we are with this project.
Any further comment? Mr. Rhodes?
So, I wanted to address a couple of the points that have been raised. First off, on parking, although this is a separate proposal from the other apartment building going up downtown, just wanted to get a confirmation from city staff that the spots that are marked as off-site parking for this plan are distinct from the ones that have been marked in any other plan. We don't have a double counting going on at any point here.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. Comment raised regarding people parking in fire lanes marked no parking spaces, these aren't things that can be controlled through a planning approval process. That's an enforcement issue and one that I, if this is occurring on a frequent basis, I think absolutely needs to get referred to Summersworth PD. As we see an increase in residential high-density development in the downtown area, it's going to create parking problems that will require degree of enforcement strength and see that we have not had in this city for quite some time. The other point I'd raise is, I come from a long line of firefighters, goes back in my family to the horse-drawn days. If you park in a fire space, in a fire lane space, and a fire happens, you don't get to complain when they knock your windows out and run a line through your car. So, people are taking a risk when they do something like that. I don't think we're going to see buildings burned. We might see a couple BMWs get flooded. So, and frankly, I don't have too many tears to shed when that happens. So, we need better parking enforcement, particularly as residential density goes up, and it's a concern that should be addressed, but I don't think it's one that we can address. Thank you.
Mr. Richardson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was going to bring up the parking plan that they provided us, too, and it does not include, other than Fayette Street, none of it is on-street parking. And Fayette Street is something that they're willing to add. And so, that would be increasing the parking, and as been said, it's public parking. If there is a point of dedicating some for other people on Fayette Street or wherever down there, then that's up to City Council to do that and not necessarily part of this discussion. I, too, participated in the parking survey for an entire day, and I can tell you that the, really the only parking vehicle on Main Street from the old courthouse all the way down to Fayette Street was a tractor-trailer, taking up seven spaces along Main Street. There was nobody else for that entire day. And so, there is parking down on Main Street, that's for sure. And the, I don't, I remember myself not particularly liking the parking on Main Street because it can be, I think it's somewhat isolated. I would like to see patrols down there more often so that vehicles aren't tampered with and that kind of thing, but it is there. And again, enforcement is something that is up to another part of the city, so...
Thank you. Further comments from the board? This time, I'd like to invite the...
Hi.
Ms. McNair?
Thank you. I just want to clarify, the Fayette thing, the Fayette Street piece, we understand is extra, that you're willing to do to improve the situation, I assume? The one-way parking?
We're willing to have a conversation with the city. We can't agree something we don't know.
No, no, certainly not. Like, it's no, it's separate from the project, and your whole parking plan has zero to do with that.
Exactly.
Now, outside of that, even if that plan goes through as it is, that will provide more parking than currently is there?
Yes. I mean, can you...
The Fayette Street plan?
If, yes, if you were to, if the city were to make Fayette Street one-way...
Yeah, if that plan...
Yes, it would increase parking.
It would increase parking to what's already there.
Yeah, it would increase it by seven spots.
Seven spots.
Oh, there's only seven spots now.
That's what I thought. Like, parking is pretty congested down that particular street right now. So, adding all those spaces actually improves it at no cost to the city or the residents that are currently on Fayette Street.
It'd have to be a conversation...
I mean, if it goes through, pathetic, or, you know, hypothetically.
But it's an improvement that the city should consider.
It's an improvement that we don't have... It's an improvement that we don't have to bear. So that, that's really all. I mean, there's, there's so much conversation around where parking is going, and I just wanted to make sure, I was like, this is an improvement.
It would, it would be...
If it goes through, it's improving the current situation, and that's what I, the point I'm trying to make.
Yes, but I...
Again, nobody's committing to anything, blah, blah, blah. Get that. But, yes, that's the point I'm trying to make. We have eight, seven, eight spaces now. If that goes through as it is, we'll have whatever, 20, 30, 40 spaces. That's an improvement to me. So I know we have a parking problem, and I know we have a housing problem, but I don't think Fayette Street is the problem. That's what I'm saying. But thank you very much.
Mr. Witham?
I want to be very clear. Although Fayette Street is not tied to their parking plan, it is tied to this plan in my mind as a reasonable off-site improvement to be borne by the applicant. And I would encourage that to be added as a condition tonight that should this, however that gets worded by Director Mears, that pending approval of the City Council, that Fayette Street be made one-way with angled parking as, as depicted, or at least conceptually, and that that cost be borne by the applicant.
Yes, absolutely.
That's how I view it tied to this project, although it's not needed from a parking numbers strategy.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just making sure, just because I'm seeing all this argument about whether or not we should do it, and I can't see why we wouldn't.
In, in the condition of approval, if it's not accepted by the City Council, does not derail this project.
No, it certainly doesn't. It doesn't impact your project at all.
I'm sorry, Counselor, but the, the issue there is that we don't know what we're committing to in terms of the cost of the street. We can't, we, we'd have like an open-ended condition. And, and fairly, it's a public improvement, but, you know, benefits like, it's, it's agreeing to something that we don't have...
I defer to Director Mears how we could handle that, because we've done that with other projects before.
Like, for example, on Church Street, we, we agreed to like a some certain to help rebuild a part of that road.
Mr. Rhodes?
Wait, Ms. Mears was about to speak.
I don't think at this point we have a figure for the improvements for that Fayette Street improvement. So it was going to be handled as a site plan amendment if the applicant wanted to come back.
If I could, if I could make a suggestion that might square the circle a little bit, the applicants presented a conceptual plan this evening that included a proposed striping layout on Fayette Street if the city was willing to convert that to a one-way. Would both this board and the applicants consider acceptable for a condition to be worded along the lines of if the conceptual plan as presented by the applicants this evening were to be approved by City Council, the applicants would be a minimal to an off-site improvement to complete striping concurrent or as presented by them?
Yeah, we'd, we'd be open to the striping. My concern is this isn't, this street hasn't been engineered at all yet to figure out how to make it work. This is a very draft proposal right here. So we need to get it more narrowed down. We would be 100% open to striping that whole area sidewalks if this was...
That's it?
Yep. Thank you.
Any other questions in the board? I have one for Director Mears. Is the condition where we would cover, getting the clarification on 62 Green Street parking?
Yes. So I did have in the notice of decision, the applicant will submit an alternative parking solution plan, off-site locations. And this goes with the state RSA that just got changed for one space per unit, so they would need 59 spaces. And that needs to be within a 1,300-foot radius of the project per the RSA. So we would make sure that there's 59 spaces designated and does not include that parking that was part of the 62.
Any other questions to the board? Invite Director Mears to review conditions.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Plan revisions, the applicant shall address any outstanding comments from the Horstley-Witten third-party review to the satisfaction of the Director of Planning and Community Development. Applicants shall address any outstanding comments from the Wright Pierce third-party review to the satisfaction of the Director of Public Works and Director of Planning and Community Development. Please list all the waivers granted on the plan. Please add the following notes on the plan. Year-round screening of any utility apparatus appearing above the surface of the ground other than utility shall be required. Please show the screening method as detail on the plan. All plans shall have a note that certifies that all aspects of the development comply with current ADA standards. Additional architectural details shall be added to the doors along Fayette Street acceptable to the Director of Planning and Community Development. Granite bounds shall be installed at all intersections of the streets. At all points of change in direction or curvature of the streets, please revise S1 dot 1. Provide details on the following items. Bike rack and onsite sidewalk detail. Please revise the drainage report with the following revisions. Section 1.1.1, project summary, please update that the report is to comply with section 17, stormwater regulations of the site plan review regulations, and remove reference to the City of Water ordinance. Please submit the operations and maintenance plan for the drainage infrastructure. Landscape plan to be updated with the quantities of plantings to be on-site. Please update the lot line adjustment plan so that there are no lines that go through any wording on the plan to be acceptable by the Strafford County Registry of Deeds for recording. Please provide a rail, railing detail. The retaining wall shall either be fully located on the applicant's property, or appropriate approvals shall be sought to allow for the retaining wall to be located within the city right-of-way. And this was added, please show the striping dimensions along Green Street. Conditions that must be met prior to final approval. The final plan shall bear the stamp and signature of an engineer, licensed land surveyor, and landscape architect. Federal and state permits will be required. Applicants shall provide access and maintenance easements for utilities, including drainage infrastructure located on map 10, lot 177. Draft easement shall be submitted for legal review prior to final approval. Easement shall be recorded at the Strafford County Registry of Deeds prior to the issue and certificate of occupancy for the project completion. Prior to the start of review, an escrow shall be established for review in the amount determined by the Director of Planning and Community Development. The applicant shall submit an alternative parking solutions plan with off-site locations for parking alternative solutions that provides, this has been changed, one space per unit. This is because of the change in the state statute. One-unit parking ratio would be required, 59 spaces within 1,320-foot radius per RSA 67416A. Onsite parking requirements, alternative parking solutions of map 10, lot 178, to the satisfaction of the Director of Planning and Community Development. If parking associated with map 10, lot 178, requires new construction of parking lot that needs planning board approval, it will be required to be constructed prior to a certificate of occupancy. Conditions to be completed prior to the start of site work, construction cost estimate for the project shall be submitted to the Department of Development Services. Prior to the pre-construction meeting, the applicant shall provide the contract information for the certified inspector who will be completing the SWIP inspections for the construction general permit. These reports shall be submitted to the Department of Development Services. The new building requires a new address. Please submit a request for a new address to the city engineer. If a hearing before E-911 committee is required, this hearing must occur prior to the issuance of building permits. This address, the address shall be displayed as per section 1923E9. The building shall display the designated address number in such a manner as to be plainly visible from the street, which abuts the main entrance to the property. Such number shall be a minimum of 3.5 inches in height and must be reflective. A pre-construction meeting is required prior to the start of site work. An escrow account in the amount set by the city's contract engineer agreeable to the Department of Development Services will be established for site construction and inspections prior to any site work. A performance surety in amount agreeable to the Department of Development Services, but no less than 25% of the cost of site construction determined by the engineer's estimate of construction value, will be established for onsite erosion control and site restoration prior to any site work and off-site improvements. If the, if all site work is completed as proposed, this account will be refunded. The performance surety will be required for off-site parking. The applicant shall apply for a new water and sewer connection permit. The applicant will be required to pay standard and water sewer and connection fees assessed on new properties connecting to the water and sewer system. Water fees will base, be based on the size of the water meter needed, and the sewer connection fees will be based on the estimate of water used in equivalent number of bedrooms. Erosion controls shall be properly installed on-site prior to any construction. Erosion controls shall be properly maintained throughout construction. Any breaks, breaks or breaches shall be repaired within 48 hours. Landscaping survival surety, 10% of the total cost of landscaping or a minimum of $500, whichever is greater, shall be held for a period of two growing seasons. Applicants shall provide a pest management mitigation plan prior to the issuance of building permit. All applicants requiring a stormwater management and erosion control shall submit relative pollutant accounting information to the Director of Planning and Community Development as required by the Public Works Director. Relevant pollutant tracking information shall be submitted prior to holding the pre-construction meeting. Post-construction pollutant information must be entered at the time as builds are submitted. The applicant shall obtain all applicable permits through the Department of Public Works. This shall include, but not limited to, driveway permit, utility pole license, and trench permits. Conditions applicable during and after construction. Construction, reconstruction of city sidewalks shall comply the construction standards in the subdivision regulations and be ADA compliant. Building plan shall bear the stamp of a certified protection engineer licensed in New Hampshire to certify compliance with all egress, emergency lighting, smoke, heat, and CO detection systems, fire alarm monitoring and reporting systems, fire suppression systems, or any other fire protection or related life safety systems required by National or New Hampshire Code. A copy of the completed stormwater inspection and maintenance log shall be provided to Department of Development Services annually on or before July 1st. This is an ongoing requirement. All landscaping shown on the plan shall be maintained, and any dead or dying vegetation shall be replaced in a timely manner. Rooftop mechanical equipment is required to be screened per site plan regulations. Please note that the retaining walls over four feet in height require a building permit, and any retaining wall over six feet in height per 2018 International Building Code needs geotechnical documentation. All outdoor lighting shall be downlit and shielded so no direct light is visible from adjacent properties and roadways. Please confirm that no proposed trees to be removed, cut, have a diameter greater than 12 inches circumference when measured four feet above grade from map 10, lot 177. If these trees are greater than 12 inches in circumference, the removal is subject to historic district regulations. The removal of rock wall located on 10177 may require HCC approval, and then as-builts are required as part of this project.
Thank you, Director Mears. Comments on the conditions by the plane board?
Mr. Witham? Yeah, the section that refers to the applicant repairing the sidewalk to ADA standards, that would be a place to put that, the handicap tip-downs for the crosswalk. I guess we're only talking about the crosswalk at Green and Fayette. On both sides of that crosswalk would be made.
Correct.
Any further comments on the conditions? Mr. Witham?
Yeah, I'm really sort of hung up on the whole Fayette Street thing. At the last meeting we had in a butter, that really liked the idea. I think we collectively liked the idea. I think the applicant collectively liked the idea. It was a fastball down the middle, but we, we swung and we missed. I don't know if we closed our eyes or thought a curveball was coming, but we didn't hit it. And there's nothing in any of these conditions that speaks to it. So it'd be, I'm looking for something to sort of hook us a little bit that if this is agreed to by the City Council, the concept plan, that the applicant would bear the cost of doing this. And that's not in here. So I don't, how do we get that in here, or can't we?
You could revise by memo or add it as a revision.
We could table this and allow the applicant to work with the city for another month. I mean, you should be able to figure out in a month what it might take in terms of dollars to, to do this, and we could just do it as an exaction.
Mr. Horton?
Sure, I, I mean, I'm, I'm with you on your comments. I agree that maybe, let's try and figure out what works with the applicant, but, you know, if accepted by the city, the applicant will stripe Fayette Street according to their proposed off-site plan, not to exceed a dollar amount. Something that the applicant understands their limits and can be comfortable with that as well.
Mr. Berry?
Yeah, I guess what would give me heartburn if I was you is I hear striping, 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 right? Where I would be concerned is that if we're doing an update on a street, there could be improvements that are linked into it, right? What if you need curbing, right? Granite costs a lot of money, guys. What if there's a pipe that needs to be fixed on the street? I, I don't know. And they're, they're worried about the unknowns. So they're, they're agreeing to striping. So I guess there might have to be some give and take from the city. If there are, if there is a street improvement, maybe the city needs to bear the cost of the street improvement, but they'll take the cost of the striping.
And there's just kind of maybe precedent, and over on Church Street with the 28, with the 22 Green Street project, we agreed to do a similar, similar setup with a kind of a capped exaction to help rebuild the road. I think we'd be open to that here too, but we just need some sort of dollar cap on it.
Yeah, I, I think, you know, it doesn't scare me to say, hey, we'll do the signage and the striping along, along Fayette Street. What worries me, exactly what you talked about, is, oh, now to do this, we have to replace all these sidewalks, all the curves, we have to rip up this pipe, we have to move poles, like, that, that's where it could start really adding up to.
Yeah, yeah, so, so I agree with you. I think, yeah, so I think, I think Mr. Horton's idea of having a cap, you know, of, of contribution, and if there is substantial rework that needs to happen on the street, that the city needs to meet somewhere in the middle. So can, can we speak, can we speak to a, a dollar-figure cap limit based on striping?
We want to do it as, some of the same contribution from the 22. So one, one thing, we're just kind of caucusing here in real time, but since we have a precedent at 22 Green Street, perhaps we could just do it on a per-unit basis, like a similar exaction, just, you know, based on, based on the same rate effectively, but just adjusted for unit number.
Yeah, it's $530 per unit of improvements.
22 Green Street, I think we came up with 76, 75,000?
I thought somewhere right around there, yes.
So just some quick math, maybe around 31,000?
Yeah, the, the one thing, Counselor Witham, I would like to do is it per unit, you know, just in case units change.
Okay. And what, what was the amount per unit on?
$530.
$530. I, I would be okay with a, a contribution towards off-site improvements in the amount of $530 per unit, because I think you could reasonably do striping and the improvements that we have there for that amount. I think that's a way to get us over this hurdle tonight.
Mr. Richardson?
Just to be, just to be fair, though, if there are other improvements to be made to that street, that they would be done by the, I'm assuming then by the city before that even the striping takes place?
I would assume so, yes.
Ms. McNair?
I have a question that has absolutely nothing to do with parking. For me, the, the parking situation seems under control. So I actually saw in this plan, as I'm kind of looking things over as everybody's talking, to do with the materials being used to, like, the exterior materials. And it said something about composite siding materials. I saw something recently on, okay, social media, it was on the Facebook site, that people were very upset about the, some people were very upset about the fact that there's vinyl siding on the existing project, the big, and it was supposed to be that same composite material that you're proposing for this one. Is there vinyl siding on the building? Is there going to be?
No, it's all, it's exactly what we showed on our plans. It's called, but...
And we, and, yeah, on that project, it was HCC, we actually brought samples into the meeting and everything to show them. to show them, and it was approved, so.
I just want to get it onto a record somewhere.
Yeah.
That it's been addressed, but...
I'll just state the siding. I'm at a moral with ProCon. Ascend is a glass reinforced polymer composite siding of its own class, non-vinyl, non-sementicious that is geared toward to be a cost-effective alternative to fiber cement. So it is classified as non-vinyl according to the manufacturer's data, and it also uses a carbon impregnated insulation material that's built into the core of the material. So it is not a vinyl siding.
And it's fantastic. Thank you so much. You saw that, too.
Comments from the board?
So I'm assuming we did add that as a condition, the $530 per unit?
Yes, as an off-site improvement.
Time and...
And just to note that that can only be held for six years, so.
Entertaining the motion? Site plan?
Okay, I move that the request of Horizon's Engineering for a lot line adjustment between the properties located at 22 and 28 Green Street assesses map 10 lots 177 and 178, and the site plan approval for a 59-unit residential building with associated parking infrastructure located at 28 Green Street assesses map 10 lot 178 be approved with the conditions as stated by the director, as well as a... Help me out exemption?
Sorry.
Perfect, that for $530 per unit for off-site improvements to Fayette Street.
Motion made by Mr. Berry, seconded by Ms. McNair. Any discussion? Posits in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed? Site plan's approved.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time tonight.
At this time, seeing that we're halfway through our allotted meeting time, we'll call for a five-minute reset. This is map 64 lot 07 condo number 032025. Director Mears.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The applicant was continued from the July planning board meeting. Third-party review was not completed. It has been completed at this point. The report was received last week and provided to the applicant. The applicant is proposing to remove the existing single-family home and construct four condominium buildings with 16 units and site improvements. Project will be serviced by private septic and proposed to extend city water to the site. The water line extension was approved at the city council meeting in January. The property received a variance to allow for this number of residential units, and that allowed for 18 residential units on the property within the CI and R1 district. This application is complete. There are two waiver requests as part of this application. One is for the stormwater system to be in one half of the minimum setback requirements, and then for soil data. Thank you.
Thank you. Entertaining motion removed from the table and continues this meeting. Motion made by Mr. Horton, seconded by Mr. Richardson. Any discussion? Posits in favor, raise your right hand. Entertaining motion to approve the... Accept the application. Ms. McNair?
So moved.
Motion made by Ms. McNair, seconded by Mr. Witham. Any discussion? Posits in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed? Application is accepted. It's time I invite Mr. McInney to make his presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Kevin McInney from Civil Works. I have with me Mike Menery also from Civil Works. Mike's here to answer any technical questions that you might have on the drainage or traffic flow or any of the utilities. So this is a proposal on a two-and-a-half-acre site on 136 Route 108, map 64 lot 7. It's partly in the CI zone and partly in the R1 zone. As Michelle said, we received a variance in April of '25 of this year to allow for up to 18 residential units in the commercial industrial zone. As you recall, this was previously approved as a pickleball facility. Market conditions just didn't work favorably for that facility, so we're back here before you today. The site conditions, even though we were allowed by the variance for 18 units, the site conditions dictated that 16 units is the optimal number, and that was based on septic loading and some other drainage issues that we had to deal with, so we worked around that number. So the proposal before you is for 16 townhouse-style residential condominiums. Each would be two-bedroom maximum. There would be four buildings, four units in each building. Each of the units are going to have one car garage and one space in the driveway behind that. In addition, we're going to have eight site driveway or parking spots for overflow and for guests. The buildings will be serviced by individual septics and municipal water. The municipal water is intended to be brought down on 108 approximately 500 feet south from an area just on the opposite side of 108 than where this proposal is. That was approved by the city council in January of '25. We had previously approved as a pickleball facility, a driveway permit from the state, so we're going to be seeking a revised proposal. But I can tell you that the trip numbers for the pickleball were somewhere in the order of 210 per day, and the trip numbers for this proposal is about 71. So we're about a third of what was... What would be proposed, so we don't see any issues. The location of the driveway is essentially the same. I think it moved five feet one way or the other, just... But the site distance is very good in that area. We are requesting two waivers. One is from a waiver from the HIS, High Intensity Soil Mapping Requirement. We've done extensive test pits, both for structural analysis and for the septic design. We feel that we've provided enough information to prove the viability of the soils. Second one is for the drainage structures to be allowed to be half... Within half the distance of the setback lines. I will remind the board that both of those waivers were granted for the pickleball facilities. They're identical to that was approved then. And Horstley Witten, who's done the third-party review, agrees that those waivers are appropriate. Horstley Witten has provided a third-party review of the plans and the drainage. We received the results of that on the 14th of August. We have not made any changes to the plans for this meeting because we didn't think the staff would have time to review those. However, in looking at the Horstley Witten review, most of the issues are very minor, some no changes, some detailed changes to the drainage. We have no issues with making all of the changes that Horstley Witten is suggesting. We've also... Excuse me, the city council has approved the road name of Dahlia Court, and the E-911 Committee has suggested addresses which we have approved, so we're through that process. We've reviewed the staff report and recommended conditions, and we have no issues with any of them, so. If you have any questions of Mike or myself, we'd be happy to answer them.
All right, thank you. It's time to open the public hearing. Does anybody in the public care to comment on this application? Director Mears, is there any correspondence concerning this application?
None this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Seeing none, close preparing, and ask for questions from the board. Mr. Witham.
Assume this has found its way through SRTC. No comments from the fire department about fire apparatus. They can easily get in, but I'm wondering, how do they get out? Do they have to go down to that hammerhead at the end?
We've done the turning radiuses, and that's what they would do, is get down to that.
And kind of back around and turn around down there. Might be a little awkward, but they could do it.
Yeah, we've done the turning radiuses and provided it to the fire chief, and he's in agreement with that.
Perfect, I'm fine with that. My only other comment, site lighting, is it just proposed on building? There are no poles for sight lighting?
There is some poles.
Do you want to speak into a microphone, please?
Oh, sorry. Yeah, there's three poles as well as the lighting on the house. One by the turnaround and then two by the guest parking spots.
Got it. I might look to add another one at the entrance, just either side of the entrance, just to light that entryway. So if that could be made as a plan amendment, that would be terrific.
We can do that.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the board? Mr. Rhodes.
Looking over Horstley Witten's comments here, I'm not entirely sure I'd classify them all as minor. There's no hydrocut results for 100-year storm included. There's some of what looked to an admittedly uneducated eye as some plan revisions that are fairly substantial. There's a request regarding snow removal and storage. There's multiple points where they recommend changing grading. There's a comment regarding showing how roof runoff is to be conveyed into the infiltration basin. There's a complete lack of a landscape plan here. There's no stamped drainage analysis or plan set that they call out here. There's a note regarding the scale of the project and a recommendation to preserve existing woodland to the degree that's possible for vegetative screening and stormwater management benefits. These don't strike me as minor, and I'm not sure that I would classify this as a complete plan where there's no consideration given to the treatment of vegetation on the site or what you intend to add when it's complete. So I'm hoping you can address that, and if those are minor, I'd like to understand how.
With regard to the landscape plan, Horstley Witten was not... It was not completed at the time we submitted to them, so we have since submitted that, and the planning staff... And Michelle, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but the planning staff has reviewed that, and I think they're okay with that.
That is correct.
Is that correct? With regard to the existing trees, there were some very large pine trees that were there that needed to be removed in order to do any development out there. Those have been taken care of. The additional trees in the rear of the property where there's one drainage structure towards the rear, we've shown that tree line to be more extensive than it should be, and we're going to redo the tree line to just include the drainage area that's necessary and keep as much as possible. I'm going to let Mike address some of the other ones.
Okay, thank you.
So going back to that tree line, so...
You can use a portable mic.
Right there. Okay, yeah, so, yeah, it's just going to hug the edge of the grading here, and that's going to provide some more screening on this back here and on that side. And that's just what's for necessary to cut down.
Okay. Have you provided the 100-year storm calculations that they requested?
We will.
You will?
Yeah.
Yeah, I just might add on that, that's... If you notice on what they're commenting, it's not a requirement of the city, but we will comply with a 100-year storm.
They've called out several revisions that they're looking for, as well as changes for explaining roof runoff. Is that to be submitted as well, or is that in place?
So the roof runoff, that's just getting conveyed by sheet flow. It's just going to roll off, flow off the roof. We're going to provide drip edges along the back and in the front of the building to provide that sheet flow and kind of slow down the energy there and get it into the swales and back to the infiltration basin.
And they had several points in here where they were requesting changes to grading?
Yeah.
Have any of those been made?
We're working through that currently, yeah. And that's just going to be an extra... Just some more details along that swell, just showing the grading, just additional spot shots of just little spots of grading that they want to see, kind of just showing that swell a little better.
Okay. I'm assuming you wouldn't have an objection to a condition that those changes be made to Horstley Witten's satisfaction before going to spin the project?
Could you repeat that?
I'm assuming that you wouldn't have an objection to a condition that those changes be made to Horstley Witten or the city's approval before the project's undertaken?
Yes, oh, yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Good, okay, thank you.
Other questions on the board? Mr. Richardson?
Yeah, a question about snow removal. Where is that going to go? I may have missed it, but I don't see a location for snow.
Yeah, so, snow removal, that's actually another one of Horstley Witten's comments. So we're going to revise a note to say that snow removal will not, or storage, rather, will not be along that entrance drive, but otherwise it's going to be just along the edges of pavement. I imagine they can probably use back by the turnaround as well if they need that extra space for snow storage.
We will designate those areas for snow storage.
My concern about it was for emergency vehicles if that backspace is used too much for snow, and that would not give them the space they need. The other question I have, and I probably should have been asking this question more often, but I always see dumpsters, but I don't see... Does that include recycling as an option for people living there? Or is it just solid waste, which includes everything?
Horstley Witten had that comment as well. I have to give that some more thought and see what the size of the containment area would be, whether or not we could have a recycle dumpster in there as well as a trash dumpster?
Yeah, the reason why I'm asking is because it would definitely require, you know, at least doubling the size of what you have planned there for that. And I... I mean, to be honest with you, it's the industry that I worked in, solid waste and recycling, and I don't know why we're not offering that to people when we build projects like this, because it's to your advantage, it's to their advantage, it's to our advantage. To me, it should be automatic.
We'll address that, and they also had a comment about the location of the dumpster, so it'd be more accessible for the trash haulers, and we will relocate that as well.
That was going to be my other thing. It would be better if it was just a straight shot, yeah, because you don't have the turning radius there for them to sneak in. Yeah.
Other questions on the board? Entertaining motion for regional impact. Mr. Richardson.
I move that there is no regional impact.
Motion made by Mr. Richardson, seconded by Mr. Rhodes. Any discussion? Posits in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed? Motion passes. Next waiver request, waiver number one. Does anybody have a motion? Mr. Horton?
I move that the request of OPEC Melody LLC for a waiver from Section 1217A4 of the site plan review regulations to allow soil data to be identified by NRCS Web Soil Survey. Data be approved.
Motion made by Mr. Horton. Seconded by Mr. Richardson. Any discussion? Mr. Witham.
Could someone just tell me what this is, because I'm going to plead ignorance here because I don't know what this means.
Is this the high-intensity soil?
Yes.
Yeah. So on a high-intensity soil survey, the soil scientist goes out there and does a very specific mapping of it. This particular site is pancake flat, and there's no difference over the whole property as to one soil type or another. So we did probably 18 test pits and 12 boring holes for structural purposes and such, and water tables, and we submitted all that to the city. So we think that that is more in excess of what the high-intensity soil would require than what they're actually asking for.
I appreciate you boiling that down to layman's terms, so thank you.
I don't know if that was layman's terms.
Any further discussion? Posits in favor, raise your right hand. Waiver is granted. Entertaining motion for waiver number two. Mr. Horton?
I move that the request of OPEC Melody LLC for a waiver from Section 1217A79 of the site plan review regulations to allow permanent drainage structures within half the required minimum setback be approved.
Motion made by Mr. Horton, seconded by Ms. McNair. Any discussion? Posits in favor, raise your right hand. Close in favor, raise your right hand. Close? Waiver is granted. This time, I'd like to invite Director Mears to review conditions.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Plan revisions, if a mailbox is lo, to be located on-site, please show the location on the plan. Applicants shall address any outstanding comments from Horstley Witten, third-party review to the satisfaction of the Director of Planning and Community Development. Please list all the waivers granted on the plan. Update the Stormwater Manual, Volume 2, as referenced in the Stormwater Plan 2, the current edition held by UNH. Please add a note on the demolition plan to abandon the existing well. Please update Sheet 12, fire hydrant detail that private hydrants shall be yellow and public hydrants shall be red. Uh, the no parking, fire and driveline shall be clearly marked and maintained. Please include the following note on the plan, landscaping shall be maintained in good condition and any dead vegetation shall be replaced within one year. Dead vegetation shall be, be replaced with the same plant material unless written permission from the city planner is received. The city planner shall allow for substitutions if it is determined that the dead vegetation was unsuitable for the soil in light conditions or has been designated as an invasive species or has become susceptible to disease or any factors that support a change in plant material. Please include a light at the entrance of the property. Conditions that must be met prior to final approval. The pu, final plan shall bear the stamp and signature of a engineer, licensed land surveyor and landscape architect. Federal and state permits, all federal and state permits shall be in place before the signing and recording, including but not limited to New Hampshire DOT driveway permit. Please provide the condominium documents for legal review and approval and escrow shall be collected in the amount of $750 or determined by the Director of Planning and Community Development to cover the cost of the review of the condo documents. Documents shall be recorded at Stratford County Registry of VHS prior to the issuance of CO. Conditions to be completed prior to the start of site work. Construction cost estimate for the project shall be submitted to the Department of Development Services. This development will require new address assignment and private street name. Please submit a request for a new address to the city engineer. If a hearing before the E-911 committee is required, the hearing must occur prior to the issuance of building permits. Per section 1923E9, the building shall display the designated address number in such a manner as to be plainly visible from the street which abuts the main entrance to the property. Such number shall be a minimum of 3.5 inches in height and must be reflective. Applicants shall install a new street sign for the proposed new street. This shall also include a private street sign. A pre-construction meeting is required prior to the start of site work. Please contact the Department of Development Services to schedule this at least one week prior to the breaking of ground. An escrow account in the amount set by the city's contract engineer and agreeable to the Department of Development Services will be established for site construction. Inspections and waterline extension inspections work prior to any, uh, site work. A performance surety in an amount agreeable to the Department of Development Services, but no less than 25% of the cost of site construction determined by the engineer's estimate of construction value will be established for onsite erosion control and site restoration prior to the start of any site work or in offsite improvements. If all site work is completed as proposed, this account will be refunded. The applicant shall apply for a new water and sewer connection permit. The applicant will be required to pay standard water, uh, connection fees assessed on the new properties connecting to water. Uh, water fees will be based on the size of the water meter needed. Uh, erosion controls shall be properly installed on any site prior to the, any construction. Erosion controls shall be properly maintained throughout construction. Any breaks or breaches shall be repaired within 48 hours. There shall be a landscaping survival surety, 10% of the total cost of landscaping or a minimum of $500, whichever is greater, shall be held for a period of two growing seasons. Uh, hold on. All applicant requiring a stormwater management and erosion control plan shall submit relative pollutant accounting information to the Director of Planning and Community Development as required by the Public Works Director. Relevant pollutant tracking information shall be submitted prior to holding the pre-construction meeting. Post-construction pollutant information must be entered at time as builds are submitted. Prior to the start of any, uh, night work, a waiver from chapter 13D noise, uh, nuisance control will be required. This request should be submitted to the city manager and may require city council review and approval. Request should be submitted 30 days in advance of a project's instruction. Conditions applicable during and after construction. Building shall bear the stamp of a certified fire protection engineer licensed in New Hampshire to certify compliance with all egress, emergency lighting, smoke, heat and CO detection, fire alarm monitoring and reporting systems, fire suppression systems or any other fire protection or related life safety systems required by National or New Hampshire Code. There shall be no wetlands degradation during construction. A copy of the completed stormwater inspection and maintenance log shall be provided to the Department of Development Services annually on or before July 1st. This is an ongoing commit, condition of approval. All landscaping shown on the plan shall be maintained and any dead or dying vegetation shall be replaced in a timely manner. All outdoor lighting shall be downlit and shielded. Uh, no direct light is visible from adjacent properties and roadways and as-built plans are required as part of the project.
Thank you, Director Mears. Any planning board comments on the conditions? Mr. Witham?
Yeah, under plan revision, should we note that the applicant shall note, uh, drip edge for the, the front and back of the buildings and also snow storage? Those were both discussed here tonight.
Mr. Horton?
Uh, additionally, I think it would be value-added that we, you know, if I apologize if I didn't hear it, but, um, provide, um, condition of approval for written responses to Horstley Witten's comments, uh, and to the satisfaction of the director's, um, review.
And I also forgot, I read two of my notes. The other was the plan revision to add the additional, uh, light at the entrance. Okay, gotcha. Thank you. Missed it, apologies.
Any other comments? Entertainer site plan motion.
I move that the request of OPEC Melody LLC for condominium site plan approval on property located at 136 Route 108 be approved with the conditions outlined in the director's memo.
Motion made by Mr. Horton, seconded by Ms. McNair. Any discussion? Close in favor, raise your right hand. Closed? Site plan is approved.
Great, thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, moving on to new business. Item 4A, Michael J. and Lorraine A. Bobinski are seeking a conditional use permit to construct a shed within the riparian and wetland buffer on property located at 7 Firefly Circle in the residential single-family R1 District, assesses map 20, lot 0513, CUP number 04-2025. Director Mears, anything to add?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The applicant is seeking to construct a 16-by-12-foot shed to be located within the woodland buffer. The shed shall be located two feet from the property line in the rear of the property. It is located nine feet, uh, from the 0-to-50-foot wetland buffer line. The Conservation Commission did review this project, uh, at the, uh, July 9th meeting and they did recommend that a drip edge be installed around the shed. Uh, the staff recommends that the board accept this application as complete and begin the review process.
Thank you very much. Entertainer motion for application acceptance, Mr. Witham?
Move that we accept the application as complete for review.
Motion made by Mr. Witham, seconded by Mr. Berry. Any discussion? Close in favor, raise your right hand. Closed? Application is accepted. What do you have on the floor?
Good evening, Doug LaRosa from Civil Works, representing the applicant at 7 Firefly Circle. Um, the project proposes to build a 16-foot wide by 10-foot shed, two feet off the property line at the rear of the property. Uh, the plan that we presented does show a two-foot drip edge surrounding it. The, uh, shed is approximately 59 feet from the edge of a wetland. Um, majority of the back of the property almost falls within the 100-foot with riparian buffer, so this is, seems to be a reasonable use. Um, it's a pretty straightforward application. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Okay, thank you. This time of public hearing, anybody care to comment on this application?
My name is Francis Claffey. I live at 9 Firefly Circle. I'm the abutting owner to where the shed is. I'll be the closest one to it and I have no problem.
Thank you. Anyone else care to comment on the application? Director Mears, any correspondence concerning this application?
None this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Seeing none, closed public hearing. Turn the questions on the board. Mr. Rhodes?
Uh, not really a question, just kind of explanation if anybody out there is wondering why on earth does this have to come up in front of the board. It's inside a wetland buffer, so it required a CUP. That's the only real reason here. A lot of the lots on the, um, uh, that development, whose name is escaping me at the moment, um, have this sort of condition in their backyards. What the Bobinskis are proposing to put in is very similar to a couple other sheds that have come in here and the conservation question had no concerns.
Any other comments on the board? Mr. Witham?
I'm just jealous. It's a nice-looking shed, uh, and, Mr. LaRosa, good to see you. It's been a while since you've been in front of us, so, welcome back.
Any other comments on the board? Entertainer motion for regional impact. Mr. Witham?
Yeah, I'd move that the project has no potential for regional impact.
Motion made by Mr. Witham, seconded by Mr. Rhodes. Any discussion? Close in favor, raise your right hand. Closed? Motion passes. Director Mears, review conditions.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Plan revisions, please show the dri, drip edge around the shed. Conditions that must be met prior to final approval. The final plan shall bear the stamp and signature of a licensed land surveyor and a licensed, uh, well and scientist. Uh, conditions applicable during and after construction. For all projects approved under conditional use permit, sign shall be placed at the edge of the vegetated buffer. Those signs shall be provided, uh, by the city at the cost of the applicant. A drip edge shall be installed around the shed.
Thank you. Any comments by the board on the conditions? Entertainer CUP motion. Mr. Rhodes?
Uh, I move that the request of Michael J. and Lorraine A. Bobinski for a conditional use permit to construct a shed within the riparian and wetland buffer on the property located at 7 Firefly Circle be approved with the conditions as laid out by Director Mears.
Motion made by Mr. Rhodes, seconded by Mr. Gilmet. Any discussion? Close in favor, raise your right hand. Closed? Motion passes.
Thank you. We didn't even have to talk about parking, I feel like.
Under new business, item 4B, 16 Interstate Drive LLC is seeking conceptual review of a proposed expansion of an existing manufacturing facility on a property located at 16 Interstate Drive in the industrial I District, assesses map 58, lot 6H, site number 11-2025. Director Mears?
Yes, uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The applicant is proposing to construct a 15,000-square-foot building for the industrial and office use. The lot is, currently has two buildings on the site and has a manufacturing business. This property is located in an industrial district. The applicant presented the conceptual plans to the SRTC at the July meeting. It was indicated at the meeting that, uh, the use was not fully determined yet. The development as proposed will require a conditional use permit for impact, uh, to the 100-foot riparian wetland buffer. Uh, the applicant has provided conceptual plans for discussion. No action is required by the board.
Thank you. I'd like to invite Mr. Aliva to make his presentation.
Sure. Good evening, Jeff Aliva, Civil Consultants. As Michelle mentioned, we went to the, uh, the TR, SRT, DRC to present this, start of this project. It's a 15,000-square-foot, um, kinda spec building, uh, to be built out on the edge of the property here. Um, one of the things that we've made some adjustments to the plans is that we've revised the drainage where we don't need to have an outlet, so we're not gonna need to go to a conditional use, uh, within the 100-foot buffer for the project. Um, so we've been able to make some changes on that. Uh, pretty straightforward. It's a, like I mentioned, it's a, it's a spec building that, uh, will have, um, in the presentation, in the, the layout here, is a 15,000-square-foot with two loading docks and room four, we sized the parking for a 3,000-square-foot office that may be part of it. Um, we know that we have, uh, water on-site, sewer on-site. One of the ideas, the thoughts that we had that came out of the TRC is we're gonna extend a new water line down the driveway from Interstate out there, add a private hydrant in that section to provide coverage, uh, for the, the, make better fire protection coverage for the buildings and, um, that's really about it. Sewer would pump into the, the line that's on Interstate as the current building does now. Um, the building position here allows us to create that back loop out in the back of the property. If you looked at the, I don't know if you guys had the project kinda narrative photo on the first page, but you can kinda see how the previous design that we did many years ago in 2011 and 12, uh, that was built out, it was more of, those had the loading docks on that side and it was more of a dead-end side and a large, large amount of pavement on that area for the trucks turning. Uh, with this placement of the building here allows us to have a turnaround, uh, comes around that for traffic. Parking for employees is on the, kinda the south side or west side of the building on that area. Pretty straightforward. Everything meets the setbacks. We're not looking for any waivers or variances. Um, and, uh, it's tucked away off of Interstate. Um, only reason that you could probably see it now is because the Gator Rock subdivision that's behind it, those lots have all been kinda cleared out and nothing's in there yet, um, but that kinda tucks up along that side. Um, again, it's really a, a spec building right now. They don't have a tenant yet for it. Um, it's not part of the Label Tech, um, building and, and business that's out there, but it's gonna be a spec building for, for future users.
All set?
Yeah.
Questions on the board? Mr. Witham?
Yeah, just, uh, no questions, comments. Uh, this area was designed for this sort of development. It is very much off the beaten path, um, although it probably needs to have a waiver from, uh, appearance standards. Uh, everything out there is metal-clad buildings and this one probably would be as well, so I don't see any impediment there. Interstate Drive has recently been, uh, improved. Uh, it handles a lot of truck traffic currently, so even if trucks come into this new building, uh, the impact is gonna be negligible on the road. We already have sewer and water out there. There's not a lot to add here. As you said, it's, it's, this is a perfect place for a building like this.
Yeah, I think the hardest part for us on the, on the engineering side is just working through the stormwater drainage for the, for the, um, to capture the flows and do the treatment.
Mr. Richardson?
Is it going to be, I don't see anything for, uh, solid waste removal or anything on that. Is that up to the person that comes in?
No, I think, uh, we'll, we'll indicate an area for where a dumpster and that stuff as we were, this was, you know, initial concept of just kinda showing the block of where that is. With, the, the newer details will have, uh, indication of where that dumpster enclosure would be, uh, adjacent to what this structure here.
Okay. I, I just have one other comment. I, I don't know whether it was intentional or not, but on the photograph here, the woman with the overly made-up eyes and the earring is just hysterical if you look at it. I just laughed myself silly with that. Right there. The hair, the, the eyes, the mouth, the earring. It's hysterical. I, I don't, I don't know, maybe it's me, but I just laughed a lot. Thank you.
Mr. Berry?
Um, yeah, this, this project, just to completely echo, uh, Mr. Witham, this is a perfect project. It's a perfect infill. It's already, uh, the trees are already cut down. I can attest, I wo, I work at Continental, you know, it's, it's a very high-volume street, a lot of truck traffic. Um, you're not causing any damage being there. Uh, there's room for growth. Um, yeah, I'm gonna support you, so, yeah, perfect.
Mr. Horton?
Just to piggyback, I think, I agree. Uh, I think it's a site that's made for that type of use. Uh, it seems to be, uh, overall a low impact to what, uh, the current use and condition is, so, um, I'm, I'm good with it.
Great.
Any other comments on the board? No further action at this time? Thank you very much.
Great, thank you.
Under new business, item 4C, NDR is seeking a Under New Business Item 4C, NDR is seeking a conditional use permit to repair a PVC pipe to fix pre-existing drainage within the riparian and wetland buffer on property located at three fifty-four Main Street in the Business B District. Assesses map zero-seven, lot zero-one, CUP number zero-three dash twenty-two-five. Director Mears.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The applicant is seeking to repair a PVC pipe to fix pre-existing drainage. The Conservation Commission did review this at the July ninth meeting and recommended approval with the following conditions. The disturbed area shall be covered with gravel, and this is ready for the board to take action on.
And the application is complete. Entain a motion for application acceptance. Mr. Rhodes.
So have.
Motion made by Mr. Rhodes, seconded by Mr. Gilmet. Any discussion? Those in favor, raise your right hand. Close. This time I'd like to invite Mr. Yaw.
Hi, I'm Andy. I'm looking for a conditional use permit for the property at three five four Main Street in Summersworth. It's an eight-unit residential property. It's been pre-existing since the nineteen seventy. The drainage in question now is, has been pre-existing. It's been there since the owner has bought it. So there was some sort of repair needed, and so there was something getting done. There is a drainage that goes into a man-made ditch. We believe it's man-made based on the description of a PHUU PB, and there was also notes that we found historically that had mentioned that this was a man-made ditch, and I think this ditch was made purposely for the purpose of the drainage, and we're pretty much asking for the conditional use permit based on it being grandfathered pre-existing. We don't see it affecting the neighbors. We don't see it changing any vegetation standards. It's going to still be the same. We don't think there will be any further impacts to neighbors or anything like that. If we do relocate the drainage, it will be just way too expensive. We've got to make a new ditch, so I think this is, it should be, stay the same. So I think that's the best case of action. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Open the public hearing. Anybody care to comment on this application? Director Mears, any correspondence?
None this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Seeing none, closed public hearing. Turn the questions on the board. Mr. Rhodes.
Not so much questions, just commentary from the Conservation Commission on this. When we, once we figured out that we were dealing with a pre-existing repair, and this wasn't after the fact CUP, it was a pretty straightforward discussion. As Mr. Yaw mentioned, it was basically just a disconnect in a drainage line that was causing water to back up into the building. So, given the urgency, of course, they repaired it and then found out after the fact that it hit a wetland buffer. The only concern that we had was that they had to remove some hot top in order to get at the drainage line. It had been paved over. The gravel recommendation was just to put what's, where gravel is classed as impervious, cover back onto it to prevent further erosion. So that was the only concern that we had there.
Thank you. Mr. Witham.
What is it draining? Is it roof runoff or?
It's, yeah, it's roof runoff. Pretty much there's, yeah.
Yeah, it's a sizable roof back there, so I can see where there would be a fair amount of roof runoff. Got it. And this again is after the fact. Everything has been completed and maybe safe for the gravel.
Yeah.
Any other comments on the board? Entertain a regional impact motion. Mr. Rhodes.
I'll make a motion that the project does not present original impact.
Motion made by Mr. Rhodes, seconded by Mr. Horton. Any discussion? Those in favor, raise your right hand. Close. Motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move that for the first waiver, formal application for the conditional use be waived.
Motion made by Mr. Witham, seconded by Mr. Berry. Any discussion? Those in favor, raise your right hand. Close. Waiver is granted. This time I'd like to invite Director Mears to review conditions.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just two conditions. The disturbed area shall be covered with gravel, and for all projects approved under their conditional use permit, sign shall be placed at the end of the vegetated buffer. Those signs shall be provided by the city at the cost of the applicant.
Thank you. Any comments on the conditions? Entain a CUP motion. Mr. Rhodes.
With the request of Andy Al for a conditional use permit to repair PVC pipe to fix pre-existing drainage within the riparian and wetland buffer on a property located at three fifty-four Main Street, be approved with the conditions as laid out by Director Mears.
Motion made by Mr. Rhodes, seconded by Mr. Witham. Any discussion? Those in favor, raise your right hand. Close. CUP is granted.
Awesome. Thank you so much, guys.
Thank you. New Business Item 4D, Summersworth Falls LLC is seeking site plan approval for a parking lot expansion on a property located at two sixty-three and two sixty-seven Route one oh eight in the commercial industrial CI District. Assesses map forty-six, lot four E and four F, site number zero-five dash twenty-two-five. Director Mears.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The applicant is proposing to expand the parking area to add twelve new parking spaces. The parking area will be located between two existing medical buildings. The project will include construction of a new rain garden to mitigate the additional impervious service and a maintenance and access easement in favor of lot four F for the use of parking and driving on lot four E. This property is located in a commercial industrial district. This application is ready for the planning board to review.
Thank you. Entertain a motion to accept the application. Mr. Horton.
Make a motion to accept the application as complete.
Motion made by Mr. Horton, seconded by Mr. Witham. Any discussion? Those in favor, raise your right hand. Close. Application is accepted. This time I'd like to invite Summersworth Falls LLC to make their presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Barry Guyer. I'm with Joneson Beach Engineers here for the applicant. This project does include two lots, four F, which is the northern lot, and houses the eyesight opthomolicle, opthomolicle, and lot four E, which has Keystone Dental. We were before the board in two thousand and nineteen, at which time the board granted the site plan approval to extend the existing parking lots at that time. That expansion has worked great, but fortunately enough for eyesight, they need additional parking at this time. So the current site plan application is to extend the existing entry drive, which is centered on the existing lot line between the two lots, add eight new parking spaces off the expanded entry drive, and then add four double-stacked employee parking spaces off the existing drive. This results in a total of twelve new spaces, eight which will be on lot four F, for a total of seventy-two spaces, and four which will be on lot four E, for a total of twenty-six spaces. Lot four F will obtain an easement from the owners of lot four E for construction and use of parking space on lot four E. Stormwater from the new impervious will be directed to a new rain garden on the south side of lot four F parking. The construction requires relocation of three existing trees and a light pole. We are requesting one waiver to allow parking in driveways closer than half the width of the setback. We attended a SRTC in May, and the plans reflect the requested changes. We have also addressed the comments from the peer review engineer. With that, I would take any comments the board has.
Okay, thank you. Open the public hearing. Anybody have any comments concerning this application? Director Mears, any correspondence?
None this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Seeing none, closed public hearing. Turn the questions on the board. Mr. Richardson.
This is for staff. Under twelve thirteen in the water systems, the, since this is all about parking, the phrase nor additional demand work proposed parking lot expansion, I would suggest that that be struck.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other comments on the board? Mr. Witham.
Could you just point out, you talk about, I think, four trees being relocated. Are we actually going to dig up those trees and move them, or are we going to get new ones?
It kind of depends on if they're able to be moved, then we can relocate them, because they were installed as part of the previous construction, so they're fairly.
Still sort of new, yeah.
So they potentially could be moved.
And then could you show where those would be moved to, as well as the light pole, if you will?
Absolutely.
Might need the other micro, the little handout.
Yeah, the existing trees will be located along the back line to provide additional buffer, and the existing light pole is relocated from this spot in the parking lot, basically just to behind the proposed parking spaces.
Understood. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments on the board? Mr. Rhodes.
Just on those trees, if you get out there and determine that they're not able to be moved, is the intent to plant new in the spot that you've designated, or is it?
Yes.
Okay. Same species?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Entertain a regional impact motion.
Make a motion that the application does not have regional impact.
Motion made by Mr. Horton, seconded by Mr. Berry. Any discussion? Those in favor, raise your right hand. Close. Motion passes. Entertain a motion for a waiver request. Mr. Horton.
I move that the request of Summersworth Falls LLC for a waiver from Section twelve four B seven of the Site Plan Review Regulations and allow pavement within the setback be approved.
Motion made by Mr. Horton, seconded by Ms. McNair. Any discussion? Those in favor, raise your right hand. Close. Waiver is granted. Director Mears, could you review the conditions?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Plan revisions. The applicant shall address any outstanding comments from Horsley Winton Third Party Review to the satisfaction of the Director of Planning and Community Development. Please list all waivers granted on the plan. Conditions that must be met prior to final approval. The plan shall bear the stamp and signature of an engineer, licensed land surveyor, and landscape architect. Federal and state permits, all applicable federal and state permits shall be in place before plan signing, New Hampshire DUS wetlands permit and New Hampshire DOT driveway permit. Please provide the draft easement language for legal review and approval. An escrow shall be collected in the amount of seven hundred and fifty dollars or determined by the Director of Planning and Community Development to cover the cost of the review of the easement documents. Documents shall be recorded at Strafford County Registry of Deeds at the expense of the applicant prior to the completion of the project. Conditions to be completed prior to the start of site work. Construction cost estimate for this project shall be submitted to the Department of Development Services. A pre-construction meeting is required prior to the start of site work. Please contact the Department of Development Services to schedule this at least one week prior to the breaking of ground. An escrow account in the amount set by the city's contract engineer and agreeable to the Department of Development Services will be established for site construction inspections prior to any site work. A performance surety in the amount agreeable to the Department of Development Services, but no less than twenty-five percent of the cost of site construction determined by the engineer's estimate of construction value, will be established for onsite erosion control and site restoration prior to the start of any site work and offsite improvements. If all site work is completed as proposed, this account will be refunded. Erosion controls shall be maintained and properly installed onsite prior to any construction. Erosion control shall be properly maintained throughout construction. Any breaks or breaches shall be repaired within forty-eight hours. Landscaping survival surety, ten percent of the total cost of landscaping or a minimum of five hundred dollars, whichever is greater, shall be held for a period of two growing seasons. All applicants requiring a stormwater management and erosion control plan shall submit relative pollutant accounting information to the Director of Planning and Community Development as required by the Public Works Director. Relevant pollutant tracking information shall be submitted prior to holding the pre-construction meeting. Post-construction pollutant information must be entered at time as builds are submitted. Conditions applicable during and after construction, there shall be no wetlands degradation during construction. A copy of the completed stormwater inspection and maintenance log shall be maintained and provided to the Department of Development Services annually on or before July first. This requirement is an ongoing condition of approval. All landscaping shown on the plan shall be maintained, and any dead or dying vegetation shall be replaced in a timely manner. As-built plans are required as part of this project.
Thank you. Any comments by the planning board on the conditions? Entain a site plan motion. Mr. Richardson.
I move that the request of Summersworth Falls LLC for site plan approval for a parking lot expansion on properties located at two thirty-six and two sixty-seven Route one oh eight be approved with the conditions read by the director.
Motion made by Mr. Richardson, seconded by Mr. Gilmet. Any discussion? Mr. Horton.
Just a quick comment. I think as mentioned in two thousand and nineteen, this applicant and site does a really nice job of keeping their landscape and the whole general site. So, you know, I have confidence that they're going to do and maintain the site in really nice condition, so just wanted to make that comment.
Any further discussion? Those in favor, raise your right hand. Close. Site plan's approved. Thank you. Under New Business Item four E, Jeremangotti is seeking site plan approval for a twenty-nine thousand, three hundred and forty-seven square foot car dealership with associated parking infrastructure on property located at three seventy Route one oh eight in the commercial industrial CI District. Assesses map fifty-eight lot zero-three, site number zero-eight twenty-two-five. Director Mears.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We did provide an updated staff memo, which includes an additional waiver for landscaping design standards, landscape plan. The plan shall have the stamp of a licensed landscape architect that prepared the plan. The applicant did provide some information regarding that waiver request, just so you know. The applicant is proposing to demolish the existing automobile sales facility and reconstruct a new twenty-nine thousand, three hundred and forty-seven square foot automobile facility. The expansion will include expanded parking and display area and new drainage infrastructure. The applicant is intending on phasing the construction demo of the old building while constructing the new facility. The planning board should discuss the phasing of the construction of the expansion as shown on sheet DM. The applicant is proposing to stay operational during construction. The planning board should discuss the impacts to the parking area and display. Zoning compliance. The property is located in a commercial industrial district. Automobile sales is a prohibited, or permitted use in the CI District. The automobile use is an existing use on the property, and there's no residential uses within two hundred feet of the buildings. That was a change that happened in the zoning around a year ago. Automobile sales, any buildings, land area, or other premises for the display and sale of new and associated used automobiles, panel trucks, or vans, trailers, or recreational vehicles, including any warranty, repair work, or any other repair service conducted as an accessory use. There are a number of waivers associated with this application. Waiver number one is for vehicular circulation and parking. The other one is for the landscape design standards. Another one is for the appearance standards and stormwater regulations. And this application is complete and ready for the board to review.
Thank you. Entertain a motion for application acceptance.
Make a motion to accept the application as complete.
Motion made by Mr. Horton, seconded by Mr. Gilmet. Any discussion? Those in favor, raise your right hand. Close. Motion passes. This time I'd like to invite the gentleman to make their presentation.
Yes. Good evening. My name is Eric Poehlen from Joneson Beach Engineers, representing the property owner. We're down at three seventy Route one oh eight. As I'm sure the board members know, this is a granite Hyundai. The site is currently in active operation as a Hyundai dealership. The building is no longer suiting their needs, and they're looking to expand, but they like their location, so they want to stay there. And our proposal is to construct a new car dealership behind the existing structure. So diving into that phasing, that phasing plan we were just talking about, the rough. So diving into that phasing, that phasing plan we were just talking about, the rough idea here is to prep the rear area for the proposed building, construct the new building and as much of the surrounding infrastructure as we can while keeping him up and operational. Once this back area is constructed and stable, they'll then turn their attention to demoing the existing building and then complete that build-out of the front parking area. We had some good dialogue with the technical review group for the city, talking about how this is going to work. We've made a couple of late changes to the demo plan that I think is going to help. There is a suggestion, which we thought was a good idea. We are proposing to shift the proposed driveway for the development south, and our plan is to construct that. There's enough room to construct it next to the existing driveway. We're going to get that in and have that be the construction entrance. So then there'll be a construction entrance, and then the entrance for the operating dealership will keep that traffic separate. We're going to propose a construction vehicle access sign, so they know to go left and customers know to go right. And we're going to do a row of construction orange cones that go the full length of the parking field to direct them out back, so there's no cross-traffic with customers, inventory, and the construction vehicles. Looking at the site plan, so the proposed building sits a little farther back. They like the idea of having a larger inventory car profile in the front of the building up by the road, and this allows us to construct while the front building is in place. You can see the parking breakdown here on the bottom of the page there, showing the inventory in the front, sales to the side, service and employee parking to the rear, and then the customer parking right out front. This will have EV charging stations, four of them, and moving on to drainage and grading, we're treating stormwater with bio-retention ponds with four bays for pretreatment and one underground storm tech system with an isolation row for pretreatment. Utilities: We have the benefit of an existing waterline stub, which we're going to piggyback off and utilize that to tap for fire suppression and domestic water supply. There is municipal sewer out front. We're going to tap that for sewer and then connect to municipal, excuse me, gas and roadside power out front. The driveway, we are moving the location. We checked it for safe site distance. We have good adequate site distance, looking left and right, which is great. Landscaping: Landscaping was done by LM Land Design. We tried to focus our efforts on the front there, where it's going to be most visible from customers and people driving by. Landscaping on the center islands there, and then around the perimeter, and then tried to find as many locations as we could to the side and rear to provide some additional landscaping. Lighting will be dark sky compliant, downcast, commercial-style lighting for the property. We did check truck turning. Fire and delivery tractor-trailers can get in and out of the site comfortably. We did request five waivers. Just to touch on a couple of them really quickly, we realized late that there is a requirement for a landscape architect's stamp. LM Land Design has been in the business for decades. They do a fantastic job, and we've used them for many sites of this size. They're real professionals, so we feel really confident in their abilities and in the design that they provided for us. The other one that we needed was stormwater. That half-distance of setback is that green buffer. The site's really flat, really flat, and it really benefited us to have the drainage systems as close as we could to the property line, so we could get them discharged to the low points. This seems to be a good area for this kind of waiver, because all of our neighbors are industrial or commercial. We don't have any residential neighbors nearby. It will be green, it's just not going to be trees that are existing now, so we feel like this is a good use for this type of waiver. And then the last one I wanted to hit on was just the parking standards. So we're a little low on our percent of interior landscape green space area for the parking field. We did try to add as many landscape islands as we could. We picked two rows to do a center-long row of landscape island to try to punch that up. But for car dealerships, inventory is their lifeblood, and we wanted to be respectful of that and try to get as much inventory space as we could for them. The other two waivers were for EFIS and New England-style architecture. I'm joined here this evening by Jason Sofier from Penny Design Group, the architect for the project. He can jump in on those if you guys have questions. We had two great meetings with SRTC Review Group. Got a lot of good feedback. We got a comment letter just a few days ago from that group. We reviewed that. Those aren't integrated into the plans before you, but we saw, those were very minor, and we feel confident that we answered all those, so that they'd be satisfactory to city staff, and we're going to submit those soon. Third-party review did occur. We did get those comments back. Again, not soon enough to update the plans before you this evening, but also reviewed those. Those comments were very minor. A couple adjustments to grading and adjustments to some riprap fields, nothing major there. This is an AOT project. It has been submitted. It got submitted a few weeks ago, so we expect to hear from them soon. And this does have an NHDOT driveway permit, and we are scheduled for a scoping session with that NHDOT staff first week of September, and city staff is invited to that meeting. So with that, I would just open it up to the board for any comments, questions, or concerns.
Thank you. Open a public hearing. Anybody have any comments from the public? Any correspondence concerning this application, Director Mayors?
None this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Seeing none, close the public hearing. Turn the questions to the board. Mr. Richardson, then Mr. Witham.
Yeah, thank you. You covered the safety procedures and plan that you have for vehicles coming in, but I'm wondering about pedestrians. You're going to have people bringing in their vehicles for service, and they're parking and then walking, and walking back to their cars and that kind of thing, and so that kind of safety is also something I'm interested in, if you have a plan for that.
Yeah, yeah, that's a great point. There is no pedestrian sidewalk on this side of the highway, so we shouldn't have anyone walking just into the site organically from the street. But what we are concerned about is people moving around, looking at inventory, or customers coming in to and from their cars. So we like the idea of them having their, we're going to, as soon as we get approval from DOT, we'll get that driveway in, the proposed one, which will be south of the existing driveway. We'll get that in, sign it, construction vehicles only, and then cut that access route off from the rest of the dealership with a strip of cones. So it's very clear that this side's construction, this side's active car dealership, and keep that separate, so that there's no confusion, that there's any reason for anyone to go into this left strip, other than to go straight into the construction site to the rear.
Okay. It's always difficult to be conducting business while you're doing construction.
Yes.
So that's very ambitious on your part to do that. I have no problem with any of the waivers that you are requesting, so I'll let somebody else speak now.
Mr. Witham.
Yeah, I'll start with the waivers. They all make sense to me. I don't have any heartburn with any of them. I think this is a good plan. It does make sense to have the inventory close to the street. The site is deep enough that allows you to build a new building. I love the idea of constructing your new access drive and using it for construction. I think that can be managed pretty well. I think traffic cones can work. You could always up it to like a Jersey barrier or something else, but I'll leave that for you to manage. That's the liability of the property owner and not the city. So, but I think it's a very doable project, the phasing that you have anticipated here. I think makes a ton of sense. I would just note, and it's just for your FYI, we still do hope, and hope, got maybe a little more hopeful than not with the state to undertake a complete streets approach to Route 108 through this quarter, which would widen the street, and in this area, there's at least conceptually the idea of a sidewalk on your side ultimately, so just be mindful of that. That may impact this, but not for a while, so.
Right, yeah.
Mr. Barry.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, first off, you know, thank you for continuing to reinvest in your business and stay with us. I've done business with you guys before. You guys have a nice dealership. Nice to see that you guys are going to be upgrading, so happy to see that you guys are going to be open and you're going to be doing this in a phased way. Very clever. So I guess let's start with construction, okay? My personal opinion is I think there should be a fence. I don't know if that's accurate, or maybe it is, but you see that in construction sites, just along the drive line, right?
Yeah, I think that's a reasonable request.
Because people will wander in. You don't want to get hit by a truck, that would stick.
Right.
You know, beyond that, I'm happy with your grading and drainage. I can attest, it's flat. You're definitely, you're definitely right. I'm happy to see the subterranean. That's good for infiltration. I do have some questions regarding the facade. So are those actual colors, or can you speak to the presentation of the building itself a little bit, please?
Absolutely. My name's Jason Soifer. I'm one of the architects working on the project, and I did bring with me actual paint samples from Sherwin-Williams that will be used along the facade, noting that sometimes the printouts don't always render true for different screens and different printers. Allow me to bring these, can I bring these to you?
Please. Wonderful, thank you. We'll pass these around.
The lighter color is what's known as antler velvet, and that will be the predominant color of the buildings, of the building's facade. The darker color is called cafe, and that is the accent color.
And so personally, I don't have a problem with your waiver request. We have debated this over and over again, of what is New England architecture in this drag? We have all sorts of different types of architectural styles and materials, but can you elaborate more on what the style, like what are the materials that you're actually using, and how do they coincide with the colors that you're working with?
Mostly, these are, these materials are dictated by the Hyundai Motors of America, the brand, and to upgrade this facility, they fall under what's called the Global Services Dealer, GDSI. I forget exactly what the I stands for, implementation, maybe. And so to follow those standards, we will be using their corporate colors, which is those being passed around, and the darker color, the darker bronze composite metal panels above the, along the top of the building here, and this canopy in the overhang is made of composite aluminum panels, and the area below that is the exterior insulation and finishing system known as EFIS, which will have a robust and, and a good texture and for wearing, and it comes with a 20-year warranty. The materials along the side is an insulated metal panel. That's along the rear of the building, and that is where the shop will be.
Awesome. Just so you guys know, Continental at Nine Hundred Street Drive actually has the same metal siding, so it's totally comparable to the area, so this is great. I love the project. I'm going to support you, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Horton.
Yeah, there's a couple of same, similar in questions that I had, but I agree, you know, I think the character fits accordingly to that section of the city. Additionally, I had a question about more of the construction plans and operations. I guess, once, we'll call it Phase 1, so once Phase 1 is complete, we'll call that the new facility. How, what's your plan on dealing with that transition of inventory to the new facility while the existing still remains?
Yeah, it's going to be a bit of a juggling act. There's going to be a lot of high coordination with Hyundai and their delivery of inventory. I think the plan is, you know, when this gets constructed, that back phase, that won't be up and operational yet, so all that parking will be available. And what we'll do is we'll shift inventory from the front to the back and then clear out that front third and utilize the area we have to the rear, and then have the ability to demo that front building. So there will be some downtime, unfortunately, but what we're trying to do is mitigate and reduce that downtime as much as we can.
The dealership also does lease an offsite parking for overflow of inventory to help manage that as well.
Excellent. So, thank you.
Mr. Rhodes.
So two pieces on the waivers that I want to address. One first is the appearance standards. I think echo what Mr. Barry said, that we have this New England architecture requirement, but what constitutes New England architecture varies dramatically depending on what part of the city you're looking at, and what you're proposing here is very much in line with this junk of 108. I think this will make the fourth new car dealership on this area, although you're replacing an existing one, so it's not out of character at all. On the landscaping piece, again, I don't think it's out of character. What we've seen for other similar facilities that are doing car sales, auto sales in the area, it is relatively minimal for a lot of this size, but it's not out of character with the use of the business. You did throw a new species at me. I wasn't familiar with consular trees. They're definitely not native, but they're also not invasive, so I'm not going to yell at you about that. But, and they're not honey locusts either, so that too. So it's a relatively minimal plan, but I think it fits with what you're doing, and what you've got out front is native, so it's not going to look out of character with the area, so no complaints.
Any other questions, Mr. Spleen?
Yeah, judging by the existing conditions planned on the C1, it shows that the tree line is right in the middle of the property, but when you see the landscape plan, it looks like the whole half of the property where the trees are located will be gone. Is any guide to imitate or to kind of conserve or preserve or more trees, I guess? Because it's like half of the property that you want to cut all the trees, and it's very aggressive when it comes to the parking, like all the building will be in the middle, and all of that in the back will be parking, so it's like a very aggressive, cut all those trees. That's my only concern.
Yeah.
For the development.
Yep. Yeah, we're trying to utilize the property to the best extent practical for his needs on inventory count. You know, his business is doing well, which is great, but the downside is it requires a lot of that parking. You know, we're, you know, what we've done is try to, you know, with landscaping and then with surface drainage, try to keep some of that green space, especially around the perimeter. But, you know, there's, it's a difficult situation where, you know, the lot's only so big, and what he needs for his car dealership to function properly occupies a large part of the project. I would be, you know, one of the benefits of the location is, and I said earlier, there's only a few commercial and industrial neighbors, and most of them are set very far away, so that helps mitigate some of the worry of we're losing some of that tree cover, but we're fortunate that we're not abutting like a large neighborhood or something, where the loss of that natural vegetation. the loss of that, that natural vegetation would be, you know, kind of a difficult hurdle for some of those neighbors. Well, we're, yeah, we're, what I mean, what I mean is, we're trying to add, add some trees back, so we did wanna add at least, at least a row of trees on the sides to help offset some of that tree loss, and along the front as well, but at that point, then we're, you know, we're trying to add trees everywhere we can squeeze them, but, you know, at that point, we then run out of room.
Mike?
Do you have a microphone?
No, sorry. At that point, we, we run out of room, and the remaining green space is, we're utilizing for bio retention, so that, that is green space, but it, it wouldn't be tree cover.
Thank you. Any other questions on the board? Entertained motion for regional impact? Mr. Richardson?
I move that there is no regional impact.
Motion made by Mr. Richardson, seconded by Mr. Berry. Any discussion? Those in favor raise your right hand. Opposed? Motion passes. Next, we'll get into waivers. Waiver request number one, vehicular circulation and parking. Anybody have a motion? Mr. Horton?
I move that the request of Jim Angotti for a waiver from Section 124B8 of the Site Plan Review Regulations, the requirement to allow a reduction in interior parking lot landscape islands be approved.
Motion made by Mr. Horton, seconded by Mr. Witham. Any discussion? Those in favor raise your right hand. Opposed? Next waiver is one, Director Mayors, that you added as an addendum, I believe, from the original copies that were sent out for landscaping design standards. Section 126E, two I's.
No, that's kind of next.
Okay. Yeah, E, you guys got it?
Yeah.
You have it?
Yeah. So I move that the request from Jim Angotti for a waiver from Section 126E2 of the Site Plan Review Regulations, requirement for plans to have the stamp of a landscape architect be approved.
Motion made by Mr. Horton, seconded by Ms. McNair. Discussion? Those in favor raise your right hand. Opposed? Waiver is granted. Waiver number three, apparent standings, apparent standards, building features and materials. Mr. Horton?
I move that the request of Jim Angotti for a waiver from Section 12BI of the Site Plan Review Regulations, requirement that the new construction be compatible with traditional New England architecture, design features be approved.
Motion made by Mr. Horton, seconded by Mr. Gilmet. Any discussion? Those in favor raise your right hand. Opposed? Waiver is granted. Waiver number four, apparent standards. Mr. Horton?
I move that the request for a waiver from Section 127B7 of the Site Plan Review Regulations to allow EIFS within eight feet of the bottom of an exterior wall be approved.
Motion made by Mr. Horton, seconded by Mr. Gilmet. Any discussion? All those in favor raise your right hand. Opposed? Waiver is granted. Waiver number five, stormwater regulations.
Lastly, I move that the request for a waiver from Section 1217A79 of the Site Plan Review Regulations to allow drainage within one-half the required minimum setback be approved.
Motion made by Mr. Horton, seconded by Mr. Gilmet. Any discussion? Those in favor raise your right hand. Opposed? Waiver is granted. This time, I'd like to invite Director Mayors to review the conditions.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Plan revisions, please add the following notes on the plan. Landscaping shall be maintained in good condition, and any dead vegetation shall be replaced within one year. Dead vegetation shall be replaced with the same plant material unless written permission from the city planner is received. Noise levels shall not exceed 60 decibels during the daytime, 7A to 7P, and shall not exceed 55 decibels during the nighttime, 7P to 7A. A note that certifies that all aspects of the development comply with current ADA standards. Bay doors are required to be automatic doors so that the doors are closed after vehicles have entered and exited the building, and no used or discarded automotive parts or equipment may be located in any open area outside of the enclosed building. A note for the methods of ongoing maintenance, I'm sorry. Yeah, that's right. A note for the methods of ongoing maintenance of private fire hydrants as approved by the fire chief. Recommended replacing the proposed red maple due to being sensitive to salt with tree that is suitable to be located in areas with salt storage. Parking lot lighting shall be reduced to a 20-foot mounting height. Site lighting to be reduced to .2-foot candles at property boundaries. An erosion control plan for overall site shall be submitted for the pre-construction meeting. This plan shall show additional erosion controls along the north side of the property. Please update the fire hydrant detail to note that hydrant shall be Kennedy K81 or Cloud Eddie. Three additional ADA spaces shall be supplied if the non-display parking spaces remain at 115 spaces. Please revise the plan to show the battery storage location will be inside the buildings. Revise the plan sheet W1 and W2 of the drainage analysis to remove Town of Somersworth and replace with City of Somersworth. Conditions that must be met prior to final approval. The final plan shall bear the stamp and signature of an engineer-licensed landscaper and landscape architect. Federal and state permits are required and shall be in place before signing, before plan signing, recording, including New Hampshire DES, alteration of terrain, and New Hampshire DOT driveway permit. Conditions to be completed prior to the start of site work. Construction cost estimate for the project shall be submitted to the Department of Development Services. A pre-construction meeting is required prior to the start of site work. Please contact the Department of Development Services to schedule this at least one week prior to the breaking ground. An escrow account in the amount set by the city's contract engineer and agreeable to the Department of Development Services will be established for site construction and inspections prior to any site work. A performance surety in the amount agreeable to the Department of Development Services, but no less than 25% of the cost of site construction determined by the engineer's estimate of construction value, will be established for onsite erosion control and site restoration prior to any site work and offsite improvements. If all site work is completed as proposed, this account will be refunded. The applicant will apply for a new water and sewer connection permit. The applicant will be required to pay standard water and sewer connection fees assessed on new properties connecting to the water and sewer system. Water fees will be based on the size of the water meter in needed, and the sewer connection fees will be based on the estimate of water used in equivalent number of bedrooms. Erosion control shall be installed onsite prior to any construction. Erosion control shall be properly maintained throughout construction. Any breaks or breaches shall be repaired within 48 hours of the storm event. Landscaping survival surety, 10% of the total cost of landscaping or a 10, or a minimum of $500, whichever is greater, shall be held for a period of two growing seasons. All applicants requiring a stormwater management and erosion control plan shall submit relative pollutant accounting information to their director of planning and community development as required by the public works director. Relevant pollutant tracking information shall be submitted prior to holding the pre-construction meeting. Post-construction pollutant information must be entered at the time as builds are submitted. Conditions applicable during and after construction. Building plans shall bear the stamp of a certified fire protection engineer licensed in New Hampshire to certify compliance with all egress, emergency lighting, smoke, heat, and CO detection systems, fire alarm monitoring and reporting systems, fire suppression systems, or any other fire protection or related life safety systems required by National or New Hampshire Code. There shall be no wetlands degradation during construction. A copy of the completed stormwater inspection maintenance log shall be provided to the Department of Development Services annually on or before July 1st. This requirement shall be an ongoing condition of approval noted on the final plans. All landscaping shown on the plan shall be maintained, and any dead or dying vegetation shall be replaced in a timely manner as long as the site remains valid. All outdoor lighting shall be downlit and shielded so no direct light is visible from adjacent properties and roadways. Per Section 1923E9, the building shall display the designated address number in such a manner as to be plainly visible from the street which abuts the main entrance to the property. Such numbers shall be a minimum of 3.5 inches in height and must be reflective. There shall be no parking of vehicles on unpaved areas. Please note no washing of vehicles onsite or outside the building as-built plans within 30 days of the completion of the project. And all other comments listed in this notice of decision in case I missed any. Thank you.
Thank you. Any planning board comments? Mr. Witham?
Dare I? Under Section 2, conditions that must be met prior to final approval, under A, it says that the final plan shall bear the stamp and signature of an engineer-licensed landscaper and landscape architect. Didn't we say we did not need the landscape architect?
Right, that's correct.
Any other comments?
Mr. Richardson?
I just want to thank you for your patience tonight.
Thank you all for your time. Thank you. I work in a lot of towns in New Hampshire, and this board runs very efficiently. I was very impressed with how many applications this board got through.
Thank you. Mr. Witham?
I'd echo that in terms of apologies for the long meeting, a lot in front of us tonight, but also a compliment. I thought the way that you went through your plan set, it was succinct, you had notes to go along with it. Sometimes we bounce around a lot, and I was able to follow this rather smoothly, so well done.
Thank you, sir.
Any other comments? If not, entertained site plan motion.
Sorry, one other thing. Any comments from Horstley-Witten that have not been addressed, that I did not see that in there, so.
Any other comments? Do they have a site plan motion? Mr. Rhodes?
I move with the request of Jim Angotti for site plan approval for a 29,347-square-foot car dealership with associated parking infrastructure on a property located at 370 Route 108. Be approved with the conditions as laid out by Ms. Mayors.
Motion made by Mr. Rhodes, seconded by Mr. Witham. Any discussion? Those in favor raise your right hand. Opposed? Motion passes. Site plan is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Don't forget to get your paint samples back.
Yes, your paint samples.
Any new business before the board, Director Mayors?
None this evening.
Workshop business, Director Mayors?
We are working on the site plan regulations. We should have that for the next planning board meeting.
Okay.
As a workshop item.
Any other items?
We're updating the site plan regulations. It's kind of a complete overhaul, so we're hoping to have a workshop on that next meeting.
And appointment of planning board representative, Mayor's Housing Task Force?
Oh, yes. There's two people that are interested in, in this position, John and Bonnie, so I have, so I have not had a chance to touch base with the mayor, two people can serve on it, but...
So, do I make the appointment, or?
Uh...
I'd move that we appoint Bonnie McNair to the Mayor's Housing Task Force from the planning board.
Motion made by Mr. Witham. Seconded by Mr. Rhodes. Any discussion?
If there's room for more and other members want to join, I'll leave that to the director to talk about with the mayor, but at least let's get our one we know of on for tonight.
Yeah.
All those in favor raise your right hand. Opposed? Congratulations.
You didn't even need a yard sign.
Thank you for the volunteering. Communications and miscellaneous, right, Mr. Witham?
Just an observation, and I don't even know if we can legally do it, but with every application, we have the lengthy list of conditions of approval. Many of them are rubber stamped from application to application. I'm wondering if we could, in the write-up of the conditions of approval, if they're, the rubber stamped ones that appear the same way for every application every time, they appear in black ink, and the ones that are specific to the application could be red or blue or some other color, and we only have to ask the director to articulate the ones that are specific to the application. I think it would expedite us in, just, it might, yes.
Sorry.
It might create a little more work in terms of the color coding or highlighting, but I think it would be helpful.
Yes. I'm tired.
Any other work, communications miscellaneous? Mr. Berry?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I promised Counselor Cameron I would speak to this tonight, so we have a special Don't Trash Somersworth coming up in the month of September, so on 9/27, from 9 to 10, we're gonna be doing a cleanup of the homeless encampment off of Willand Drive. It's a nasty one, okay? So we had a, we had a really rough pickup. There was a lot of really nasty stuff back there. I'm talking like clothes, there's couches, there's like a lot of needles and things. So, we're looking for roughly 10 to 15 adults. We are not doing children for this one, just because there, it is a dangerous site. For anyone interested in volunteering, coming out and doing a cleanup, please bring steel-toed shoes just in case. We'll have a safety briefing before we begin, but hopefully you can make it. So once again, primary date, 9/27, from 9 to 10, and in the event of rain, it'll be the following day, 9/28, also from 9 to 10. All right, so hopefully we'll see you there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Gilmet?
Yeah, it is true, and actually, when we did...
Put your mic on?
Comment on. But definitely protect your clothing, protect everything, because it's not something most people are gonna even want to see.
It is true, 'cause when we were, when we were there a couple of months back, we pulled out about 50 needles out of that site, okay? So it's...
We did five, five piles of needles, not counting.
It has to happen, we appreciate everybody's...
CCs, everything else, so just, just protect yourself.
Thank you.
Great, we'll see you guys there, thank you.
Any other communications miscellaneous? I just have one item, sorry about this. Director Mayors done a good job with the Walmart landscaping, but I noticed that the muffler shop is not included in that for some reason. So, thank you. Entertained motion adjourned.
Real quick, sorry, I want to piggyback off that, but hey, great job with the corner of Bartlett in West, oh, there we go, thank you. But nice job the Eversource cleaned up and rehabbed that site, so great to see that. So thank, thank you again to Michelle and your staff.
Unitil, it's...
I'm, it's late.
Don't give Eversource much...
Entertained motion to adjourn, or unless there's any other...
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Mr. Horton, seconded by Mr. Berry. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you very much.